Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Englewood Cliff Mayor and Council Regular Meeting. Today is September 13th, 2017. It is now 8:10 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Mayor Kranjak?
Here.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Here.
E. Park?
Here.
O.?
Here.
McMorro?
Here.
M. Park?
You.
Wu?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Present.
Superintendent of DPW?
Here.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
Municipal Clerk? And Borough Engineer?
Here.
Everyone's present, Mayor.
Great, thank you. For the flag salute, can I have the Little League players come up and meet us? I pledge allegiance to the flag. While we're standing, can we have a moment of silence for the victims of 9/11? Hurricane Harvey and Hurricane Irma? Madam Clerk, may I open up the meeting backstage?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Great, thank you. We're going to honor our Englewood Cliff 2017 District Championship travel team, the 10-U team. They're here. Councilwoman McMorro's in charge of recreation. So she's ready, she's got her list. We're going to acknowledge all of you. You guys did a great job. I was very fortunate because I got to go to their party when they won that night. And, you know, the last time I saw you guys, you were having a lot of fun. But you have to get home and do homework now, right? So...
What I'm going to do, because I want to be able to call each and every one of you up here by name, I am going to ask you to go back out in line here so I can call you up each one, and then with your coaches, who you deserve it. Okay, if I could have everybody's attention for a moment. This is really exciting. And I have to say, I did see that these championship games, Councilwoman McMorro was there. This was probably one of the most exciting games that I've ever watched. And that being said, I don't know if the coaches go into more detail, but we have to be proud of all of these children. They did a phenomenal job, and I wanted to call them one by one up here so that they can be honored. Now, I understand Kyle Lee was not able to be here tonight, but I wanted to state his name as well. So the first player is Kyle Lee. Next, I have Anthony Settor. Please, can I go around? Susan John Powell. And Leon Rosen. I understand they have a really great cheerleading squad. I don't want to embarrass anybody, but they're hiding that, you know, they can come out as well. But I'm going to turn it over to Tom. I know Andy didn't hear, you didn't hear what Andy said before you guys came up here. His son said that he would kill to be in the position that you guys were in right now.
Ten-year-old Morris don't need to be in the position.
This is such an honor, and I remember the last time that this was won at Englewood Cliff, but I'm going to let Tom tell the story about that because I do remember it myself.
So I'm going to try to give a quick synopsis. We were down to our last out against Palisades Park. In the West bracket? In the West bracket. Down to our last out, we tied the game, we wound the winning extra innings, and that put us into the final round. But we lost, and what happened, we had to beat Tinet, which to me was a really powerhouse around here. We had to beat them twice. We beat their best pitcher in a 7-3 game, I think it was 7-3 to fire. And then we came back to the championship game in Richfield. In Richfield. In Richfield. And then we mercy, we mercy Tinet. They didn't know what hit them. We mercy Tinet 13-3, and then put them in the district championship. We were down 3-0 in that game, and these kids showed so much grit, so much, just so much fight in them that, really, Leon, Albert, and I could not be proud of every single one. And 1 through 12, all the kids contributed. They practiced hard, they practiced long. We would have practiced long if we had lights. Now, but really, they deserve all the credit. They were fantastic. They make all of us feel the honor when we coach them. They listened, they came, and walked away. And we weren't the, we were not the favorites to win this. We really weren't. We were undersized a little bit. We had some hurt kids. And they pulled together like only the Englewood Cliff kids know how to do. And like I said, we could not be proud of every single one of these guys. I think it was, I think it was when my nephew played, which is, I think, '07, was the last time we won a championship. Around here...
We have to get that board fixed at the field.
Yeah, but around here, I mean, really, it's a bragging rights amongst a lot of all the small towns. And for us to do what we did with the population that we have, I mean, it's all about the kids. They want to come, they want to play, they want to practice, and we need facilities to do that, period. We need to be fast, and we need that. All right.
Okay, we're adding a few resolutions, so we'll have the Borough Clerk read those in now so people can comment publicly.
Okay. During closed session, a few items were discussed. We are tabling to the October 11th meeting, Resolutions 170 and Resolutions 174. Again, we're tabling them to October 11th. We're also adding three resolutions. The first one is...
Let me correct you, we're adding two.
Okay, two.
One is on there.
One is on there, but it's blank. So Resolution 176, that is on the agenda. It's authorize Borough Attorney to negotiate agreement for access and environmental testing for Block 601 Lot 7 and Block 601 Lot 8, and to share one-third costs for same with no, what does that say?
Obligation.
Obligations incurred to property owners Lee and Vendell.
That's Pershing Road.
On Pershing Road. 177, authorize Borough Administrator to seek discovery records in pending litigation, and if necessary, Borough Attorney to seek court order to obtain same U.S. District Court. And...
Read it again.
I'll read it again. 177, authorize Borough Administrator to seek discovery records in pending litigation, and if necessary, Borough Attorney to seek court order to obtain same discovery records. 178, authorize Borough Attorney as counsel for Borough in the matter of Englewood Cliff's affordable housing, and to substitute Attorney Anne Marie Rizzuto.
Thank you. What I'd like to do next is, Andy's here. Andy Hippelad is our Borough Engineer, keeping it busy these days. Can you just give us an update on the B3? The hearing that we had last week, the meeting that we had, and the status?
Let's be brief. So I think, not to relive the whole history, we had a number of things that happened with the B3. We did a report, you had it, you sent to your planning board, they looked at it, sent some comments, the resolution about you. That instituted more conversation among the mayor and council. It instituted a public hearing, which had, was like four or five hours ago. I think a lot's been done since the planning board looked at it, so I think your next step, in my opinion, is to have your body vote, if you so see so, to send it back to the planning board, have them relook at it, knowing all the other pictures happened since they looked at it the first time. They can advertise it, whether they should advertise it. They can make comments or not, and I think they have 40 days to make comments. And then eventually it comes back to you, then have your public view, and you can advertise and either adopt it or not adopt it. I think that's where we are, in my opinion.
So thank you very much for doing that, for being here. We're not going to do anything else on that right now with you, so you're free to leave or if you want to stay. You're welcome to stay.
We're going to stay for the public.
Do you want to stay for the public portion?
Sure.
I have a feeling it'll come up.
Perfect.
Okay, so the minutes of the caucus and regular meetings of August 9, 2017 were distributed. I assume everyone on council had an opportunity to review those. If they're acceptable, will somebody please make a motion to approve them?
Some will.
A second?
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Thank you. Correction, correspondence received since the last meeting. Will Borough Clerk please reference those for us?
Correspondence received from the 200 Club recognition, recognition of our police officers. Eric Bernstein, privileged and confidential. He's our tax appeal attorney. Lauren Eastwood, resident, submitted three emails regarding, two of them on 116 Pershing Road, and the third one on 25 Karen's Lane.
Thank you. We're going to talk about the payment of claims. Your Finance Committee Chairperson, please speak to that.
Sure, Mayor, thank you. I just want to make a motion for Resolution 17-164. I reviewed the bills, moved that they be paid, and the total bill list, the total from the bill list is $5,413,745.33.
Do we need a second? Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes. Next up on the agenda are the Department head reports for August 2017. They were sent to all the council members. Did anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we'll move on. At this point, I'd like to open up to the public. So have a motion to open to the public?
Some will.
Second.
On favor?
On.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, just come up to the microphone after I acknowledge you and state your name and address.
Hi. Debbie Fair, 49, Witty Field. I was at the court, just playing, hearing a little conversation, but I heard what Andy said. But just for clarification, you know...
Can you get a glow stick so it's not picking up?
Just for clarification, when you're voting to send this B3 zone issue back to the planning board, you're sending it back with no recommendations, like you're not saying, you're not sending it to the planning board as a rehabilitation zone, you're just sending it to the planning board to relook at the entire situation? Do I understand correctly?
Yes.
Yeah, I made the motion just to update you. I asked the council their opinion, if they were in agreement, that given that we have recented the planning board, they send something back to us. We then had many discussions, and we had that, I quote, pretty productive meeting at Upper School. A lot of people got into the salt, and I thought, there's no harm to send it one more time back to the planning board, just to take a look again, give them all the additional conversation that has been heard.
Okay.
And then come back to us again.
Okay. All right. So you're just sending it back?
It's a one more time thorough.
You're not sending it back to any of your...
We want them to consider what was discussed publicly last week.
And then come back to us.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And if you want to add anything to that?
One more thorough, please.
That's it?
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One more precious point is coming to Englewood Cliff. I sent the letter to the mayor and council about a traffic light. I don't know if you've read it, but I mailed it to you. With our letter, yeah?
No, I believe you've read it.
I haven't got it.
Recently?
Do you have it here?
Oh, no. Over 10 days ago.
I didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
All right, I'll re-mail it.
Thank you.
It's from the Commissioner of Jersey where I called him to see if I can make a note turn on red on this year, because somebody's going to get killed on that street. I mean, it just, it's horrendous. It's gotten worse. You're going down that street at 70 miles an hour, 65 miles an hour. You can't get any traffic. You can't put your garbage can on. That's what I said.
I know you've mentioned the speed problem on the street before, and I conveyed that to our Chief of Police.
I know, but he doesn't want to do it, and I had my talk with Mr. Chaffey. That's his opinion, and I have my opinion. We agree or disagree. Something's going to have to be done, or somebody's going to get killed.
Yeah, just to be clear, I didn't convey anything regarding turning or not turning. I just mentioned the speed issue that you raised.
No, I did, and I raised the two issues. Because if you don't turn, you don't get the speeding issue.
Or you speak fast on the good news.
Look, there was a police officer behind me, I don't know who he was, behind me, and I stopped at the, at the light, waiting for the light to change. Two cars passed me on Main Village with the red light. I mean, it's horrendous what's going on over there. He gave tickets, he took over to them. I mean, only the primary doesn't know what's going on on Justice, and I hear it's just as bad on Dillon Camp. So it's not just probably John, but...
John Dillon Camp, Summit, Johnson, Africa.
No, it's something that has to be done.
Yeah.
I mean, we just can't say. It's happening, you know, but it doesn't, leave it outside. I hear what you guys want to do in B3. I, of course, don't agree. But that's my opinion, I don't agree. But I've been told that I have something against Mr. Chaffey, which I know. The only thing I have against Mr. Chaffey is the way he takes care of his buildings. What I did do is I got on the computer and pulled off the greatest code of Englewood Cliff. Can you give this, Andy, to the man? And what I also did, to make it simple, Andy, don't go away. I made everybody a copy, and I underlined it so everybody could see what we're allowed to do in Englewood Cliff and what we're not. See, that's the expression.
I'm glad you stayed in. Park, Park, Andy.
Stay there. Don't leave. I'll leave, my boy. Andy, just a copy. Now, if you look on the top, Mr. Mayor, and people who live council, driveways before you park, no person shall park any vehicle, residential or commercial zone, except on eight areas such as driveways and parking spaces. Look at the victims. I don't mind giving somebody a break. You can't blow up these buildings and paint them white and tell me that they're vacant. And because they're vacant, they're going to seal the buildings. Our town looks like crap. Fix the windows, and let even us can put the windows. Put a couple of chains in there. Paint the damn thing. Paint the fence. Let us get the world. Instead of going to B3 zone, the main old seven buildings, zone it. Give the guy a chance to do something, not B3. I mean, the way you want to do it so we can get some housing or something on. Give the guy a chance to do something.
Right, so those are two different issues, right? So property maintenance, this is something that we talk about every day, and we're trying to get...
It's not property maintenance. It's...
Well, it is. It is property maintenance and what you can do with this property, or whoever owns it, so...
And if I may...
I was going to ask Kathy.
Well, I'm going to ask Kathy, because she's been on this every day, and Mr. Morfess, as you know, that there are only certain things that we can do.
No.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I'm going to let the administrator speak with you because I check every day with the building department, and so does she.
Hundred percent.
I'm going to let her respond. And you did own many buildings yourself, right?
Hundred percent.
So you know...
Hundred percent. And I own many buildings now, and I know what they are, and I know how Hackensack does it, and I know how Dumont does it, and I know how Burger Field does it. You don't empty a building and seal it for your own convenience.
I'm going to let the administrator respond.
And if the fire department allows it to have water, gas, and electric on vacant buildings.
You know what, Mr. Morfess, is this administration has done more in the last six months than ever since...
I will tell you something. You said to me, you said to me that I did not, I did not give you the right respect. I believe that you guys have done a lot. I believe that you guys are trying to be transparent. I'm not interested in the police seat administration. That's dead. God, I'm interested here now. We are here now for this. If these are your codes, and this is what it says you want to do, I'm not interested in what's going on. Let's do it.
Let's let you stay there.
The administrator tell me.
Kathy, would you?
I'm not.
All right, let me know if you...
We, as you know, this situation didn't begin overnight, none of this property maintenance has, but in fairness to the property owner, the building department has been working with him. You know, we all want to be a hammer in administration, but at the same time, you may recall you at most of the meetings that we did increase the penalties for these types of violations in order for the ordinance to have some teeth. The prior ordinance really didn't have financial due to it, so we did change that. But in fairness to this particular property owner that you're referring to, he has been working with the construction official to approve things. He has to get price estimates to get things done. He has made...
They don't disagree with you.
Right.
The only thing I'm disagreeing with you is the sealing of the buildings. They don't need to be sealed.
But he's, my understanding, well, yeah, if the windows are broken, I believe under the Voca code, he has to seal...
Why don't you fix the windows?
Well, that's something that's being worked out progressively on each property.
Why don't you read your code? And if you read your code, your code says, don't do it, fix it.
Well, your code does not supersede Voca, so at this point, if he doesn't have the build, the windows fit, he cannot have windowless structure.
You're making the area look worse than the South Bronx. Do you understand that?
I'm not saying that we're not going to change...
It's worse than Newark. Newark looks good.
I'm not going to argue with the point that you're telling me. I'm sorry.
That's not, you're right. I said what I said.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the public wants you to be heard? Yes, sir.
I'm here to stand, Andrew Snyder, I live at 750 Ford Street, which is adjacent to Witty Field. So, of course, I live so close, I see things that are going on in Witty Field, and there's a problem that I've seen this last month. I've seen a young boy, about 13 years old, driving a dirt bike, motorized dirt bike, on Witty Field, going approximately 25, 30 miles an hour. And he does have the helmet, but I really believe that that's a danger to young, the young and the old on Witty Field. And dirt bikes are supposed to be driven in remote areas in the dirt, not on Witty Field. So if there is an ordinance against this, then it should be enforced, and if there's not an ordinance, then we should have one to protect the people who are walking around the field.
Did you call the police, please?
What's that?
Did you call the police department when we saw that?
The police were there. I didn't call them, but they were there at 1:00.
Okay. You're right, we should deal with that.
And there are many stories about different towns now, mayors talking about the problem of dirt bikes in Newark, Jersey City, different places. So it's a real problem. These are unlicensed, motorized vehicles.
Yeah, I think there's ample state law that would restrict the use of those.
So I think you need to look into...
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And then, the next thing I just want to say about the Director of Public Safety, and I said this before here, this community is a very small community, it's 5,281 population as of the last census. The crime rate is very low, and I just don't believe that we need a Director of Public Safety. I think that it would get in the way of the first department and their functioning. And in fact, in, you have not even said, you've talked about what this person would do, you haven't even given us an idea of what the salary would be. Would it be $150,000, would it be $200,000? I think it's important that we know what kind of salary we're talking about, because when we add people to this administration, we're adding the... because when we add people, uh, to this administration, we're adding the cost, and, and taxes are gonna go up. And then the next thing is, your, your justification is that, uh, it's gonna increase litigation. I don't think it will, and I, I fear that litigation might even go up, because of having somebody else involved in public safety.
Is there anyone else in the public wishes to be heard? Yes.
So this is why I'm just calling you, Andy, and just to confirm that you can speak again on the ordinance, the tolls, the taxes, taxes, the taxes, the payments, that's correct. Uh, the payment of claims of five million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, is, is that enormous? Is there something that you don't hear?
I agree with me, 'cause I said the same thing to the administrator, as soon as I, I had it all. I think it was the way it all fell in one month. Um, that was my first reaction, like...
Do you want me just to cover the large ones?
Can you give that, I appreciate that.
Um, the reason why it looks abnormal is because we have a past through payments of school taxes as well as housing taxes. All right, so it blows out to an odd-looking number, so we have the school taxes, the open case taxes, and the taxes in there.
Yeah, so, okay. I thought I'd take your, uh, one.
So Catherine, just for the record, are we within budget in terms of what we're doing?
Yes, we're within budget, we have to ask you, and we have to show an unpaid payment of claims for our payments of our taxes.
No, we added, uh, one seventy-eight, which is to appoint, I don't know if I heard this, guys. You appointing Ann Marie as the counsel for COA?
Substituting in for the prior lawyers.
Substituting in for the prior lawyer.
Yeah.
So, so that means you're now the current lawyer for COA litigation?
Yeah. Oh, well, no, I didn't do it yet, I gotta...
Okay.
We're asking to authorize.
Okay, do, do we currently have litigation that needs addressing?
Well, we, we have affordable, we are part of the statewide filing, yes, we have lit- litigation, and...
Parry, I, I know, I know it's parry, but I also know that in Burntown in general, they're really coming down on the sounds to start doing something about their COA obligations. So I'm, so what I'm asking is, um, currently living in an issue in town?
Well, no, I don't think it's an issue. No, I mean, but it's, it's, it's on your, uh, it's on your schedule for discussions, is that...
Dorsey and Senna, why is he...
Okay, so, I know about the litigation, Dorsey and Senna took it over from the prior attorney, who took it over from the prior attorney, since, since two thousand fifteen. We have a court date for in case management process. So to do that, I have to be attorney of record.
Right.
So it's pretty standard.
Were you handling it for the prior council?
I, I...
Do you have experience?
I have experience in, in COA litigation, and I wasn't specifically handling angle, because another attorney in my office was dedicated to the COA.
But you have experience.
But I have experience, uh, you know, many, many years, in both when COA was active and in these affordable housing litigation. I don't expect there to be a significant litigation in this, because we don't have any...
We all hope not, right?
Yeah, we, we don't have any developer suits against this, no developers are suing.
Okay. So my next question is, have you made any decisions with the mayor council regarding the lease for the Lions Club?
No, there has been no decision on that. There's been some internal, uh, meeting with the Lions Club operators, but that, that is part of the plan that the borough already has, the planning board adopted. That's a borough property, so it could be subject to development for the affordable housing. It's owned by the borough.
So is the planning board decided we're going to renew the lease?
No, 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 no. No, they do not. No, they do not.
So the, the mayor council has to make a decision on lease for the Lions Club?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Rorrio, once again, on this platform, I would like to repeat my suggestion from the floor. I'd like to see the young students, I'd like to see a committee for us, a, uh, research committee. To find out, and to research and to make recommendations for a council for Witty Field, I think that you could come up with something homegrown, that would be absolutely fantastic, probably much more than you need to pay a lot of money to be outside. You could get some experts about drainage, you could find out in-house what would be the best. It would benefit the students, engineering and design is something that is, uh, that is emphasized in school sound, would give them an opportunity to contribute, uh, to their town at the earliest age. It would be a civic activity for them. We could involve the teacher, if the, uh, board would be amenable to that, the superintendent, we could involve experts in town, older experts in town. It's a beautiful thing to have young and old working together, coming up with something completely unique, completely different than what Pettify has, than what all the other towns have, which is, at best, mediocre. Second thing I'd like to bring up, uh, is, um, the Public Safety Director. I'd like to understand a little bit more about the history of all this, because I, you know, you hear drift and grabs of people being passed over for chief. Was anyone passed over for chief years ago? That, that causing, that might be causing animosity towards the present chief?
You, you're free to discuss.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Keep going, just keep going. Keep going. By the way, I'm just asking Catherine, do we have a drainage expert on staff? It's a certified drainage expert, that Mr. Rorrio thinks that we might have on staff?
There might be some...
But our superintendent serves in all our drainage issues. Before we then announce it to the engineer, should it be beyond his passing certified.
There are contrary to all these, some, uh, engineers in town, I'm sure there could be some engineers in town who would be willing to at least, but they're cleaning in the pot. So my question is, trying to get to the root of this public safety, uh, position that's being created. Uh, there is a quote here, which I'll read in a second, but I would just like to find out the root cause of the root, where did this come from? Why, uh, why would the mayor say, which I don't think was all that appropriate, "We have essentially a dysfunctional police department right now"? This is from, from Ronnie Riley. "Uh, we have essentially dysfunctional police departments right now, and I don't have any confidence in the senior leadership." I can't quite understand the mayor saying that about the building police department. So I'd like to find out a little bit more. Where, what is the root of this animosity? Was it, uh, Mr. McFarrel, Pennsylvania, McFarrel? Was it your husband that was passed over years ago on being chief? Is that what the problem is here? I'd like to get to the root.
I think you know, I, I, you, you wanna attack me every meeting.
I'm not attacking.
It's okay.
I'm not attacking, Karen. Honestly, I think it's good.
It's okay.
It's good for us to get to the, to the bottom.
There is no bottom. There, I don't, you wanna create this story.
No, well, okay, so, all right, so, I just wanna know if there's any validity to the rumor, is that I heard?
There is no validity. You've asked me this repeatedly, and I've told you that there are none. But if you wanna keep defaming me and my husband and my family, go right ahead.
Okay, hold on. So rather than, rather than attacking people, just attack the issue, okay?
No, I'm actually trying to get to the root cause of the purpose of this public safety.
Right, but you're parroting what you've been told by others, and that makes you a parrot, okay? Not a thinker. If you're going to deal with issues, deal with issues, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will, I will...
Don't attack people, attack issues.
Do you have any crackers for me? Okay.
Tic Tac. You said it, I didn't say that.
I'm perfectly, I listen, I...
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm the first one to make...
So you want our children to do excavation work, and what else do you want? What else do you want?
No, please, 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 don't twist my words. I'm saying we form a committee, and we have people sitting around a table, and we brainstorm, and come up with something that's really innovative, okay? That's all, that's all. Give our kids a chance to participate in government, and participate in bettering their community. What better lesson could we, what could we do as civil, as, as council people? I think it's an excellent suggestion.
I, I thought, I thought Major Consulting...
If you want to mock my suggestion, you can mock it.
I thought Major Consulting came up with a very fine solution for issues.
Let me continue. First of all, I think we have a very fine police department that is not dysfunctional, number one.
Right.
And, number two...
Because most, most police departments have eight lawsuits involving police.
Okay.
Since you, since you came, oh my God, that's not true.
You could come to the microphone, but get to raise your hand, okay?
And there was another quote in there, which, which was, uh, Billy, I'm not picking on you, please, let me clear that. I'd like to understand it more. I think, uh, the position would enhance the borough's management team with this position, the borough's management, I'm trying to get in the quote, I think wrong, but I'd like to understand more of what, what management is necessary. Why does the council feel that they have to manage the police department? When we have a chief that's managing the police department, it seems very, very well, and not dysfunctional, and, yes, there are lawsuits, but one of the reasons for those lawsuits, that's why I brought it up before, maybe somebody in the past got passed over, maybe there's a root of cause there, maybe there's some varied animosity that needs to be brought out into the open, so we can solve this. That's all I'm saying.
You're just repeating yourself now, can you move forward?
I certainly can move forward. Do I have any more good, wonderful suggestions? Probably not tonight, I'll save, save them for another time. But, Mr. Mayor, I would say that, uh, the, uh, comments that I made on the article regarding the, the Chiotti properties that was recently published, and I, I totally agree with the comment before, the comment before. I don't know what's going on, but I think we should start, uh, issuing some tickets, and I think we should really make it public. You've got a property, keep it up. If there's financial problems, okay, let's take that into consideration, but get the property cleaned up. I don't know what the big deal is, and I don't know why we have to go through this whole redoing a B3 zone. I think that if, and I'll tell you quite honestly, and I know that you have no jurisdiction over it, but the biggest blight in this whole town, the biggest blight in the B3 zone are the power lines and the telephone poles. That's what the biggest, when you look up, it looks like a, a mess up there. But those are, if the town starts by putting the sidewalks in, making it more attractive, do the towns do what they can do, other people will follow. So we don't need to, you know, reinvent the wheel here, we just need to enforce the laws. So let's get those tickets, spread those tickets, condemn the building if you have to, and, um, on from there.
Look, I agree with you on the, on the, on the wires, they are unsightly, but that's the way it is.
I know it's...
We can't, we can't bury those wires, it'd be blasting a million dollars every hundred feet.
I realize that, but...
So maybe we just have to wait for wireless electrical transmission.
No, no, but we could do what it's done overseas, and we could contact, uh, the, uh, utility companies and say that we are more than willing to be, uh, serve our town, sort of as a pilot project for putting these utilities underground. We are a vulnerable town, as was seen in Sandy. All of these, it's like your nervous system on top of, on the, on top of your body. If your nervous system is on top of your body, it's gonna go wrong. That's our nervous system, all the utilities, all the electricity going through town is exposed to wind, to weather. Let's, let's get the president of PSCNG, let's invite him here, and let's say, "Look, we're, we're working with you, and let's, let's do something different, progressive in this town." Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Yes.
Karen Geiger, two seven the operator. I just have one comment to David Ashley on the, uh, on the pipeline wires. To my experience, when used streets are constructed, the, uh, wires have gone underground, unable to flip, I know, because I looked on one of those used streets about thirty-five years ago. So, uh, just for the record. Two, I have two short questions. One of them is on resolution one seventy-one with FCA reopening. As some of you know, I appeared at the planning board meeting, uh, because I was very concerned about the conditions and property. I waited patiently for many, many months. I believe this particular resolution was adopted by the planning board, thanks for your duck, at least six months ago. I also noticed that developers agreements are now coming to the mayor and council for, for approval and signature. And to my recollection, they're going to the borough attorney for review, and this one in particular, signed by Mrs. McNar, I don't know why, Mrs. McNar versus the mayor, but what I'm trying to understand is, in the past, developers agreements were approved by the council to the planning board, because it was the planning board council who sat through the entire process of reviewing, um, what happened with the planning board, and to best check the developers agreement, or consistent with the consistency with the resolutions that that attorney actually ordered. So I'd like to know when the procedure was changed, did the council vote, and I'd like to know when to change that procedure, and why was it done?
Okay, so Ms. Geiger, I'll address, I don't know what the procedure was before. This is the first one that I've handled in the two months that I'm here as borough attorney, as well as the six months when I was with Dorsey Senna. However, in my experience, developers agreements are not authorized under the municipal land use law. In fact, the planning board should not even be a party to developers agreements. I've had this discussion. However, just to assure you, this developers agreement, because it had a litigation behind it, and three planning board resolutions, all of which I read very carefully, and incorporated into the developers agreement that I did negotiate with the developers. But to put your fears, uh, allay your fears, this developers agreement was in fact requested by the planning board resolution, and the, is going to be a signatory to, they are directly a party, and their attorney did review it before sending it to the borough. But the correct procedure is, the planning board has no authority whatsoever to enter into a developers agreement. It is the council that is supposed to enter to developers. They can recommend one, they can recommend, "We think you should have a developers agreement", but they're not supposed to enter into that.
Well, developers agreements are usually done, or at least in my experience, have been done with major projects, such as LG. Such, I guess this one now becomes a major project, I'm not sure why this particular one takes, has, has that classification, not like the, uh, size or magnitude of LG.
Right.
But I'd like to know when that procedure was changed, because I have been attending many planning board meetings, and I've also attended many, many, too many, mayor and council meetings, and I don't remember that authority being brought back, whether it's correct or not.
Okay, so...
To the mayor and council. So I would appreciate that that position be voted on by the council.
Yeah.
It needs to be voted on.
You don't have to vote on the mayor and council. Thank you.
Ms. Geiger, um, please, in my experience, in all my years, and I did defer this to the borough attorney's office, um, no developers agreement is done at the planning board. It's supposed to be done by the mayor and council. So if the procedure changed from the history of this borough, then I'm the one who changed it, because I deferred it to council, because it has to be voted on by the mayor and council.
So, so, I'm glad to hear that you're coming, please, telling me why this particular one, this particular one has taken so long.
It hasn't taken long, ma'am. It was last approved by the planning board in December. I got it...
We only got it...
December was the last planning board resolution, last December. I got it about a month and a half ago. I got it about a month and a half ago.
Right, I, I might be off yet, too. So the developer, the developers' attorney and their engineer was coordinating with our office, and they signed the resolution in the developers' agreement.
Right.
And outside their approval, they were trying to fight items that the board approved, and we wouldn't pass it to our office because we said it doesn't need the board's approval, and it took them, the developer, six months to agree.
Yeah. It took four years.
It will be done tonight, hopefully.
Yeah, but just, just so you also understand, it wasn't this agreement or this project.
No.
This happens to be the first one that came across, Ms. Geiger.
The prior one was LG.
Excuse me.
The prior one was LG.
No, you're not, no, you're not correct, because I signed the prior one, and it was not LG. So there was another one, I'm sorry, but there were more.
I'm happy to be corrected.
Okay, there were more, and if the past administration didn't do it correctly, we are correcting it now. All right? So those are things that I know that, you know, some of the things that were taken care of.
So it is being done tonight, and the chief dealer will be there?
Well, we put to a vote, Ms. Geiger, so when we put it to a vote, you'll see however my colleagues vote.
I'm, I'm sure.
Okay. I don't know how they vote, right?
No, I don't know how they vote, Ms. McMorris, perhaps you know how they vote.
Then I don't, no, no, I know how I vote.
Let's go on. I'm more in quibble with you.
I don't know why you're bringing up into the conversation.
This is probably common, period. Ms. Geiger has the floor, everybody, please let her speak.
Thank you. A small item, a hopeful request. I submitted an over request to this borough on August 26th. Over requests by state law have to be responded to within seven business days. It is now the thirteenth of September. I was told that the borough would respond to me by the 29th. On the 29th, I was told that it went to council for review. Let me clarify, I am asking for a copy of the mayor's email to the Bergen Record, which formed the basis of their recording of his comments. This is a public document. There is nothing whatsoever that is privileged in that document. And I want to know why our tax dollars are being wasted, going to a borough attorney to review what is obviously a public document, not subject to redactions, not subject to re-hold. It was something from the mayor to a public entity, the Bergen Record. Thank you.
That's how I respond.
To an entity that reports to the public. They have no privilege.
Is anybody else that wishes to be heard?
Is what's being answered, am I receiving that?
You signed it off. Yes.
Where is it?
Where's the answer?
Where's my answer?
You don't get an answer.
Why not?
Why not?
Because this is your chance to say what you said. You said it, now, now let's eat with it.
I am trying to avoid a lawsuit.
Your time has run out. Your time has run out. Thank you.
Of course.
Take a seat.
What else is here?
Thank you for your comments and your feelings.
Mandy Eastwood, a four-millimeter drive. I am here tonight to discuss something I really wish I didn't have to discuss. It, I got me the peanut gallery. It involves certain persons receiving favorable treatment by virtue of their not being required to comply with our ordinances. This is a particularly sore point with me, that's why I got involved politically, because the building department seems to have a habit under the prior administration of not enforcing the ordinances for certain individuals, regardless of the impact that that might have on their There is a property at 116 Pershing Road, which is owned by Councilwoman Clark's husband, which has a non-conforming building on it. Under our ordinances, when you, you cannot extend or alter a non-conforming building without a variance. This building in particular requires three variances. It requires a side yard variance, it requires a combined side yard variance, and it requires a coverage variance. But somehow, it was given a building permit to expand without any of those variances. And this is a sore point for me, because I had spent twenty thousand dollars in engineering fees because my next door neighbor got a series of building permits for a non-conforming lot without variance, which is what's known to me, and it severely affected drainage on my property. The other incident was, one of our city council members, built a new house. Now, most people who build houses, in Englewood Place, have their site plans and their asset plan as reviewed by the borough engineer at their own expense. And as the prior engineer, I understand that expense could be considered. Councilwoman Versa, this didn't happen. And he lives next to a street, he's property attached to it, so it seems to me it would be particularly important because of the potential impact on waterways. Every resident of this town should be treated the same. Every resident of this town should have to abide by our ordinances. There should be no favoritism, no favoritism, that it seems to be happening under the old building departments. This is-
And the rules.
This is incredibly unfair to everyone. It is unfair to the neighbors, who were denied notice, as I was, of this building, and who might want to object. If I had a building three and a half feet from the property line, I probably want to object to the expansion of that building. It's unfair to the taxpayers, who potentially face selective enforcement, and God only knows what other lawsuits, when some people have to obey the law and some people don't. And it's fundamentally unfair to all of those residents on whom the building department enforced the rules, who had to go to the planning board to get a variance, who had to hire a lawyer, who had to hire experts, who had to incur the delays, the costs, and the potential for being turned down, the conditions that are imposed. It's just, it's not fair, and I really think it's disgraceful that two of the people who are supposed to be making laws, treating everybody fairly, are sitting up here having received favors.
Any comment, ma'am? I'd like to comment, but I don't think so.
One second, one second. Can I just state that the correspondences were received, and the borough administrator has requested an investigation? I would caution, you, council members can speak on their own, but I would prefer that there not be a discussion back and forth, because the matter is still being, it's, we just received it, it's being looked at.
We received it this week, and I'll, I'll stay for the record that I reserved any comment on it, other than to ask Catherine to have our construction code official look into it and come back with a report. What I'll say is that, yes, all our laws, all our ordinances, everything should apply equally to everyone. Those days are over, okay? Yes, Mr. Versa?
It should be over, I think we should be always a hundred, hundred percent the same for everyone.
The prior days are over, Mr. Versa.
So, I'm used to this, because this is the second time in a row that I'm running for council, that Ms. Eastwood has brought up a silly complaint once again. Just, I just want a little record for everyone to understand, when you sit as an elected official, we are not allowed to use our professionals to do our inspections. We have to go to outside towns. For my building, I had to use Alpine's inspectors. So, I don't know what she's talking about, to be in all fairness, I don't know what you're talking about, engineer, I paid the DEP several thousands of dollars to get approval to build on that property. Believe me, everything was done exactly the way it was supposed to be done. This is just another political stunt by Ms. Eastwood, who was the financial chair for their party, and it's the second time now, second time. The last time was on a tax appeal by an owner previous to the property I even purchased. So, I'm used to it, Ms. Eastwood, don't worry about it, you don't ruffle my feathers, you don't rattle me, I actually kind of laugh at what you do. It's just a silly thing. Everyone, the mayor's absolutely right, everyone should be held to the same standards, and I believe I was, and I believe I complied. So, so, when I told, you had your turn, you had your turn, Alpine was responsible, I believe, for my construction. If you have a problem, take it up with them. Thank you.
Is anybody else trying to comment?
I don't know if I was able to address the name.
Is there any? I'm sorry.
Can I speak, please?
Oh, yeah, sure.
So, I just wanted to tell everyone that I began my project in October of 2016, before I became, you know, a councilperson. I had architectural plans drawn, everything was submitted, all, all fees were paid, I passed all inspections, I think all the inspections were done by Tuna Fly, other than maybe perhaps one. But, just to let you know, I don't know if you've been into my house, but there's a lot of people from town that's been to my house, and I am not building a new house. It's my old house, and I'm gutting and renovating. I'm not building out, I'm not extending anything, so as far as variances, I don't need one. Okay? Secondly, I know there's, that my house renovation is being under review. Once we get the findings, I want it on the record, I want it in public, and if it comes back that I was, that there was no wrongdoing on my part, that you're trying to tell the public that I did, I want a public apology from you, Mr. Eastwood, because you've been constantly harassing me, and you've been, you harassed me at the last meeting, and I'm, I'm honestly, I'm tired of it. And if they come back with the findings that there was no wrongdoing on my part, I want you to publicly apologize at the next meeting.
Okay, that's enough. Okay. You're out of order. Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Okay, I don't see anybody. Oh, yes.
I'm Mary O'Shea, Quonberry Avenue. In 1985, I was the secretary of the board adjustment, and board adjustment took care of variances, side yard variances, and different things, zoning issues. I subsequently, a few years later, I stayed a four-year term on the board of adjustment, and now I am on a planning board. And I take issue with the fact with, if what, what Ms. Eastwood said, because I've always followed the rules. And one of the reasons I became a Republican was because I saw the Democrats always getting away with things and not following the rules. If I get, want to cut a tree down, I call up the environmental inspector and have them come, or prove, give me a permit to cut a tree down. Members of the planning board, previous members of the planning board cleared whole pieces of property of trees with no permit. Mr. Chiotti's property behind the building where CC Construction is, they've been cutting trees down without permits. When the steakhouse, when Mr. Maranuzzi was involved in the steakhouse, they extended their front porch like four feet toward the highway, they did it on a Sunday afternoon, and their sign now was halfway behind the extension on the porch, there was no permit there. CC Construction, the building that Maranuzzi vacated when he moved into the office building over by Chiotti, they closed in the porch, they put in a wood burning or some kind of a chimney fireplace thing in there. I've repeatedly, repeatedly seen these types of things happen, and it's upsetting. I got a variance when I, when I renovated my house in late eighties. I expanded and gutted my house and made it bigger. I went to the board, and I applied for a variance, because I needed a side yard variance, because my property is fifty foot wide, and I had twelve and a half feet on each side. So in order to make the garage into the house, I had to have a side yard variance. I applied for it, paid all the fees, got a variance, got my building permit, my CEO, everything. My grandmother's house on Third Street was forty-five foot lot, forty-five by a hundred. I was always advised by Mr. Maranuzzi that if that house was destroyed, you could only build it on the original footprint, because it's a non-conforming lot, and the house could not be built, you could not build another house on the property. I bought five feet from the next door neighbor for seventy-five thousand dollars to make my lot conforming. All right? So if your lot, Ms. Park, is a non-conforming lot, any additions to that house, any, any work on that house, expanding it sideways, backwards, you need it to go before the planning board, because you cannot make those alterations to a property on a non-conforming lot. That's, again, it's not, it's wrong. Okay? And somebody looked the other way, I don't know what happened, it shouldn't have been done. And these things, these things have been happening repeatedly through the years, okay?
She said she didn't have a vote.
I didn't extend, it's the same footprint, but it's a non-conforming lot.
Excuse me. Say this on the speaker.
If there's something truly needs to get it approved. And the same way, there's three family houses on my street.
Please let the residents speak.
Which the previous building inspector would go to, and it was not supposed to be a three-family house, it was supposed to be a two-family house. Another property owned by the same owner, renovated the properties, another supporter, and put up decks and porches and pavement, okay? Anything goes if you're on the right team, okay? And that's why it's wrong.
Anybody else wishes to be heard? A motion to close the public session, please. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor of closing.
All in favor of closing?
Aye.
I only got two ayes, we're not-
I made a motion.
All right, thank you.
I'm not feeling that bad right now.
Thank you.
Turn around, then.
Turn around me.
Hey, folks, folks, all right.
I stand down.
No, we're not doing this, guys. We're going to continue our meeting. Council members, I admonish you guys to just listen and stop picking fights with the audience, please.
Just follow, just follow your lead, ma'am. You're the king of that.
All right, we're up to resolutions. Resolutions? No, we're fine, thank you so much.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Andy. You and David going out for a drink?
Yeah, so resolutions, we have 165 through 178, we've eliminated the table rather, 170 and 174, and I am recused on 171. So, Madam Clark, the floor is yours.
Resolution 165, approve velocity bike run through angle cliffs. I need a motion in a second.
So.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo. 166, award bid to nature's choice for disposal of leads. I need a motion in a second. Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo. 167, accept community night out donations, motion in a second.
So.
Second.
Of versa? Councilpersons of versa? E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo. 168, approve release of maintenance bond for 21 Sylvan Avenue. Motion in a second.
So moved.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo. 169, appoint alternate public defender. I need a motion.
So.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo. 170's table till October 11th, 171. I need approved developers' agreement for FCA Realty 100 Sylvan Avenue.
So.
Second.
Note, the mayor should be accused on that.
Yes. Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
172. Award bid for emergency medical services. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
173. Authorized submission of NJ DOT grant application. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo. 174 is table till October 11th. 175. Authorized sale of borough vehicle at public auction. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
176. Approval of Pershing Road Agreement for testing and access. And I will, I will read again what I read earlier. Authorized for Borough Attorney to negotiate agreement for access and environmental testing for block 601 Lot 7 and block 601 Lot 8 and to share one-third cost of same with me, with no litigation in, with current property owners, Lee and Vendell.
No further obligations.
No further obligations. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay. Uh, that was O. and of versa. Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Okay. Let me just flip over. Give me one second. Resolution 177. Authorized Borough Administrator to seek discovery records in pending litigation if necessary, and Borough Attorney to seek court order to obtain same. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Councilpersons of versa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Mayor, it's a tie?
Yes.
Resolution 177 passes. Resolution 178. Appoint Borough Attorney as Council for the Borough in the matter of, I don't know what that says, regarding Englewood Cliffs Affordable Housing Coa.
Right. So moved. Second.
Councilpersons of versa?
Well, yes.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
And passes.
The next step of the public hearing on ordinance 17112, an ordinance amending the code to the Borough of Englewood Cliffs to add new provisions to create a position of Public Safety Director.
Motion to discuss?
Yes.
I asked the Borough Attorney several times as to whether Councilwoman McMorro should be recused from this. I haven't had anything written, but I'm going to ask on Borough Administrator, should Councilwoman McMorro be sitting in on this discussion or voting on this?
That's a legal question.
Should she be recused?
We have Borough Council's opinion.
I think Borough Attorney really should issue a legal opinion on this.
Councilwoman of versa, you're asking a non-attorney to issue a legal opinion, and under New Jersey law, that's not permitted.
So, I'll ask Council, Council again. She should not be voting on this, I don't understand how you could still allow it to happen.
I, I have opined in the past that Councilwoman McMorro is not required to be recused on general legislation involving the police department. That's my opinion. She does not have a conflict of interest. I'm uncertain why you think she has a conflict of interest.
I think anybody who has, um, forth issues against the police or has that, I think they should step aside. I just think that's it. If it's not...
Anyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot of people with issues with the police department. Well, not those who have brought them up on charge, is what I'm not sure.
All right, so before we sink into the, the black hole here, can I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Got a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, the floor is open to the public to come up and speak to the ordinance and the ordinance only that's being proposed. Please raise your hand if you wish to speak. Yes, sir. Come to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is Arthur O'Keefe. I'm a resident of Brookshark Place, a resident of the Cliffs for the past 30 years. I'm also the former Police Chief of the Engewood. I'm also the former PVA president of the Engewood PVA. And I'm also the person, obviously the only person, as a Borough Secretary, Public Safety Director of the Engewood Institute in 1977, probably 1980s. And I have some questions, especially implementation distortions, as gentlemen have said earlier this evening. I'm a bit concerned as a taxpayer that we're engaging in putting another level of bureaucracy into the police department for a department the size of 23 officers. I know that there has been some contentious relationships between current leadership. I've read in the newspaper and refrain from getting involved or questioning that. The police chief is capable of the same assault. But absent any type of non-fusance or mal-fusance, we would recognize the conduct that would be disciplinary action, termination of our police unit. I fail to understand the basis of this position, which is in essence a civilian position with no law enforcement authority and no statutory support for what the purpose of this is.
Well, here, I mean, let's hear, I haven't, I've gone through this before, sir, and I thank you for your comments, and they were quite eloquent. Back in July, I listed a whole litany of reasons that, quite frankly, I could get into tonight to some degree, but I'm not going to repeat them all. We have, we have had, in my 18 or 19 months of being mayor, we've had outrageous displays of behavior from our police officers in terms of coming to that microphone that you're at, saying that they feel unsafe in their workplace, and looking at me to do something about it. And then I said, I said, "Well, look, the chief is responsible for your safety." So then the allegations go further. They say, "Well, one of our officers, one of our brothers, was swinging a six-foot harpoon knife over his head in police headquarters." And I heard that a few times, and then I saw it in a litigation. They actually wrote this in a litigation where they're alleging that a fellow officer is swinging a knife. Now, you as a law enforcement individual can certainly appreciate if somebody's doing that anywhere, they're probably going to get arrested, let alone in a police department. And if it happens in a police department, there should be some proof of it. Okay? Next allegation was, "One of our brothers has fallen asleep at the computer and we suspect him of drug use." Okay? Well, did you test him for drugs? No. Well, why not? It's your obligation to do that, as I understand it statutorily, to test that person for drugs. So, the litany goes on and on and on. We've had, we've had lots of issues. We have lots of litigation. We have one litigation, sir, where one officer says, "I'm suing the other guy because he made me cry." I mean, this doesn't make sense in a well-run police department. You read about it. I live it. And I'm not living it anymore until we get it under control. So, the one thing I've always said since day one is, "Take the politics out of the police department." When your officers come to work, when your officers come to work, they're on duty. That's it. There's no room for anything else. And I suspect that you probably ran a very well-run organization.
With all due respect, Mayor, having a Public Safety Director inserts a level of political interference within the police department that's not necessary. And all of us, the body of officers, in my experience, that in having a chain of command that's clearly delineated, precludes verbal litigation. By placing a Public Safety Director into office over the police chief, all that does is going to create a different conflict. It's going to force the litigation. It's not going to prevent it. Now, I can, I can tell you from experience that that is the case.
We've tried many solations here.
The police department by its nature has to be able to. It cannot have a politics. It has to be objective. It has to be...
I agree with you.
It has to treat everyone fairly.
We don't have that here. We absolutely do not have that here, sir. And I respect your comments, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to live this way for another, you know, number of years where we have essentially an extension of a political party running our law enforcement. Okay? That is the truth of the matter. And, and, you know, just to get to the PVA, these are young professionals with careers that really are, are subject to the whims of their senior leadership. Okay? And I won't tolerate for people and their families to be subjugated to that kind of behavior. I want people to come to work in this borough, do their jobs, and feel good about their jobs, they get paid well, and get their benefits, and I don't want them to have to worry about the political whims of who you should do a favor for or who you shouldn't do a favor for. And I'm going to reiterate this with a perfect example for you, because I didn't mention this in, in July, but two days before the July meeting, actually three days, it was 9:00 PM on a Sunday. Okay? I'm going to read my notes to you. At about 9:00 PM on July 9th, my phone rang and it was one of the three representatives, it's a Sunday night, 9:00 PM, one of the three representatives of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department Bargaining Unit calling me. I asked if there was an emergency. After all, it was Sunday night. He said, "No, no emergency." He asked me if I would be willing to meet with them, the PVA. I said, "Of course." He asked me when? I said, "Right now. Right now. I'll stop what I'm doing and I'll come out and meet you." He said, "That would be too soon." We arranged to meet two days later at a private location because they could not be seen with me in public. Big problem. It sounds pretty silly, but the PVA fears that they cannot meet with their mayor in public or at Borough Hall. So I wondered what or who they are afraid of. In the spirit of meeting and addressing the problems we have at the Englewood Cliffs Police Department, I met privately with Officers Lee and Romes in their official capacities as representatives of the PVA. They did not disagree with me that there are problems with the Englewood Cliffs Police Department, in their leadership and in their relationship with the borough's government. But they seem to feel their hands are tied because of the department's leadership or lack thereof. So I felt more right than ever about having a Public Safety Director and untying their hands. So, there's basically two PBAs. There's the one that comes in here in a phalanx with their t-shirts, flexing their muscles, trying to intimidate us on behalf of their leadership. And then there's the other one that's basically crying out for help, and I'm offering them that. And if you're going to tell me I'm wrong, you're free to do that, but then I'm going to tell you, you're very wrong, sir.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not here to tell you that you're wrong. I'm here to tell you that Public Safety Director is under control throughout Borough County and it's failed Borough County.
Right.
Also, if I do that despite your attention as the PVA says, it's my understanding that the PVA filed with civil rights laws against the governing body.
Right, it was dismissed last week, sir. So, thank you for bringing that up. I'll also bring one other note, fact point for you. In 2006, I believe, the current senior leadership supported a Public Safety Director. There was a resolution of the councils sitting then, an ordinance actually approving a Public Safety Director. So, I'm not doing anything new here. It's just that...
Well, I know you don't agree with me, I understand. I'm just here to tell you that my experience has been, the experience of other police teams throughout Borough County has been, that this is a failed policy, and it's not something that I feel taxpayers of Englewood Cliffs should have to support with 24 men police department because you have a contentious relationship with your police chief.
Thank you. You're not going to change my mind, sir. In fact, no one in this room is going to change my mind. Thank you. Thank you.
Mark. Mark. Mark.
Anybody else?
Mark. Can you check that microphone? It's not picking up. It's fine. Thank you. He speaks very well.
Uh, yes. You know what? You guys decide. You say the same thing, so you pick one.
I'm the power here.
Hi, Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred. I've spoken before adamantly against the creation of the Public Safety Director. But before I speak again on that subject, I'd like to shed some light on two of the comments that the mayor just made regarding the project. One of them was that a police officer came to me alleging that it was a six-foot harpoon and that found its way into the litigation. And the other is that the same officer, the mother officer, was found doing drugs or had drug use, whatever. Those two...
No, he was never found doing it. It was alleged.
He was alleged to have been found at his death with some suspicion of having drugs.
He was asleep.
Whatever, whatever is specific, I'm not going to quibble with the voting of that comment.
Go ahead.
We give each vote to the litigation itself and it is win. The comment I want to make is how those two comments were made, those were made by the entire PVA when they came in March to say that they had a problem in Memphis, and they feared for their safety, and you, Mr. Mayor, stand put on your orange statement. That was your response to them. This was the entire PVA...
No, well, just as your eye on the cliffs mistakes, everything is full of lies, you're again not stating it correctly, so...
Really? Really? Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
For my opportunity...
Be more profound than usual. Come on, I'm encouraging you to be honest here for once.
I am always honest, Mr. Mayor. Let's go on. And the officer who said...
I'm encouraging you, come on. Find it within yourself, Karen, to be honest, at least once.
If this is Geiger to you, not Karen.
Come on, Karen. And where's Marty, by the way? I haven't seen him in a while.
My husband works.
Thank you.
I thought you weren't supposed to pick fights with the police.
And, let's go on. You were just...
Go ahead, go ahead. We're just having, we're having fun, right?
No, I'm having fun. This is really serious.
Go ahead.
And you make, make a mockery of the public when we try to state what we believe is going on in this town and why we believe that you and the council should think twice before you vote to establish this position. And I want to correct the comment that you made out of context about the officer who said he made me cry. This officer was Lieutenant Tracy and was part of his counter suit against the borough, responding to Deputy Chief McMorro's suit personally against him, where he accused him of defaming, where he accused Tracy of defaming him, because in his deposition, where he acted as an officer of the borough, in an effus, in a deposition to, in the McMorro versus the Engwood Cliffs lawsuit, in December of 2015, I believe, um, the, Lieutenant Tracy alleged that he had been the victim of homophobic slurs by Deputy Chief McMorro. So let's put in the full context of these before you demean an officer by taking a half of a sentence in a, in a, in a litigation that's pages long. And each of you should read those litigations as I have. Now, as far as the, uh, PBA, the PBA filed suit, whether it was dismissed or not, I don't know.
Well, I'm telling you it was.
Well, I have yet to see what's gonna happen. Suit's are dismissed, and they come right back. So they're dismissed on individual...
Listen, I'm sure you have the inside track, but right now it's dismissed.
It depends why they were dismissed and what the comments were made, and since I'm not privy to that, I'm not gonna comment on it. The public safety director, um, the public safety director adds a level of bureaucracy to a very small department. It also, as far as I am concerned as a resident, still threatens my privacy. When I look at the duties and responsibilities of a public safety director, on page one, you say that the public safety director shall respond to all, or shall come, shall respond to any fire, school, and community emergency disaster. That's on, sorry, page two, paragraph 2.2.31.4, under duties, functions, and responsibilities. I would like to know how the public safety director is supposed to be alerted to each of these fire, police, school, or community emergencies and disasters. Is this an obligation of the chief of police to alert him as he's on his way to handle it? Is it a responsibility of the fire department, and they're the ones that have called? Is it a responsibility of our emergency ambulance services who are under contract? That just isn't very clear, and I fear that this person may have access to police restricted band radios, and I don't want that out there to a layperson who is not a member of the department.
You know what's really funny about that is the former mayor was given a police band radio by the chief.
I'm not talking about the past.
And I didn't want one.
You're having a good time.
Oh, yeah, because it's silly.
I am talking about the present, and I am talking about my preservative...
The former mayor has a police radio, and you think that's okay?
I love, I want to hear when the former mayor got his radio.
Yes, you were.
I don't know if he has one or wasn't.
You were there. You know what I said? I don't want one. You know why? Because I'm not in operations.
Excuse me, this is my turn to speak, not yours, as you will very often tell. Now, the other side of this...
I'm sorry.
Public portion to speak. My time, my time. The rest of the items on the resolution oversees the hiring, supervision, training, and discipline of all members and all employees of the public safety entities. Let's understand, there's only one public safety entity. It's the police department. Number two, keeps, keeps track of necessary training and certification requirements. Is there a problem with that that I'm not aware of? Are our police not certified? Is there no problem with this certification that somebody else has to keep these records in addition to the chief of police? Provides supervision over all criminal internal affairs and disciplinary investigations. We went through this with the, uh, borough attorney a few months ago. Internal affairs and disciplinary investigations are the privilege of the police department. They are not outside of fires. That's the guideline. So I want to know what role this person is gonna have, and does he have access? Allocates reviews and allocates, uh, resources accordingly. What else is in here? Those problematic. Represents the public safety entities to other departments and officials. Does that mean that he votes out there instead of the chief of police if there's a police emergency in terms of, in terms of explaining the role of the borough? Responds to and resolves difficult and sensitive different inquiries and complaints. Explains, justifies, and defends the policies and programs. If I, as a resident, have a complaint with a police officer, I file, and if I file a complaint, it becomes an internal affairs investigation. Why is this other individual getting involved? Let's see, okay. And then it goes on and on.
I'm not gonna...
My bottom line is, we don't need this. It's an intrusion into our police department. It is set up to micromanage the police department. It is, it serves no purpose in our town, and it is not a budgeted position. And also, I think it's irresponsible of you to not disclose to the public what you expect to pay. If you are going to have this ordinance established, and you are going to invite people to submit their resumes to respond to this job, you have to have some idea what you're paying. So it makes no sense that you are not delivering that. It's irresponsible, and it doesn't give a sense to the person who might apply, unless you already have somebody in mind and have had those negotiations, who knows? What you, what they could expect in this position, and by the way, this is probably the most political position, the type of comments that one could set out. A position that reports to the mayor and works, um, at the behest of the mayor and council, subject to the pleasure of the mayor and council, to be discharged from his job at the determination of the mayor and council, is by its nature paid for the position. Thank you. Oh, and we also need, basically, boots on the ground. We are down officers, we are being warned.
Thank you. So, um... The, the, the whole issue of the PBA coming to their microphone, you haven't been recognized yet. The whole issue of the PBA coming to their microphone was, last year, they said they were unsafe. And I take that very seriously, and, and as far as I can see, nothing has changed. So I want to make sure that we have a safe and secure environment for all our employees. No, no other group has complained about their safety other than the police officers, and it wasn't about the safety out in the streets, which, you know, is certainly understandable. It was about safety within their own police department, which I found bizarre. Anyway. Yes.
Let me ask those ten eight street. I don't know too much about qualifications for the public safety officer. But I have a couple of questions that maybe you can answer. Is this person considered a law enforcement official?
He is a...
No, he's there in a position above the chief of police. They serve as a liaison.
They serve as liaison, okay. Now, in previously...
And have other duties and functions.
Of course, of course. And you see, as I recall hearing that this person would be the first person to be trained in CPR, because we don't know who we're gonna get off the street to apply for this, that we trained in CPR, so that they, as a first responder to an emergency in town, would be the, it can be the first ones on the scene. Does anybody remember hearing that? Or might y'all remember that?
I, I know that this, this draft here that we had for, for second reading...
Mm-hmm.
Dealt with the one provision that you're, I think you're speaking about, which was the very first section of the duties and functions, and it's been changed. So I'm not sure...
So that person is no longer expected to be, basically, the first person on the scene, you know, with officers, obviously.
Well, I don't think it ever, I don't think, I think it said, "Take command of..." Is that what you're talking about? We took that out.
Okay.
Right.
Um, will this person be riding around in a, a borough vehicle?
Potentially.
Will it be a police vehicle?
I don't know yet.
Would they be permitted to be in a police vehicle?
Those details haven't been worked out.
Well, I think we need to know that, because, uh, as, as a law enforcement officer, are they allowed to, uh, uh, sorry, as a public safety director, is he per, he or she permitted to ride around in a law enforcement vehicle with a radio, with a, probably not a gun, of course?
No. I would assume, I would assume no to your question, but I don't know for sure.
I mean, because I don't think that...
I've never gotten that, I've never gotten that detail.
I have to say for the record that they have let me have a foot right around.
What are your talents?
They allow to drive around in a police car.
Who's that?
Police department.
Let me clarify that.
You are allowed to ride around, allowed to drive around in a police car? Were you? Taken down...
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, my, the car that I drove to my classes was stripped of the lights on the top.
Lights, but I had everything else in it, that police car has. That's what I was told.
No, that's incorrect. The car was stripped.
Well, why would you be told that anyway? As you were told, if I won't, if I won't...
Excuse me.
Who are you? I told you who I was.
You're getting up to your comments, ma'am, I mean...
That's okay.
I'm asking you a question.
Let's get back on track.
I'm asking you a question. I'll be to the end of your day, but calm down. I'm not being very calm, ma'am. Well, why are you accusing her?
You're asking a question. I'm accusing her of anything.
Answer it then, answer it. How did you find that out, that she was in a police car and it wasn't the truth? That's a lie then. I don't like that.
It's not a lie, ma'am. It's not a lie.
Lizette, I'm ashamed of you if you've done that. I'm more ashamed, I am more ashamed of this council who did nothing about it when you knew it, if you knew it, Carol. Why didn't you do something about it then?
For the record, if I may, for the record, for the record...
That's okay, you can handle it.
The vehicle that I used for classes is a stripped police vehicle. That vehicle was also used by the property maintenance officer that we had last year to drive around town and give summonses. That vehicle was also used by some of our volunteer firefighters to go up to the fire academy and take classes. No.
As is appropriate.
It is not a police vehicle. It's a stripped police vehicle, which is...
I just wanted to know if that's...
Which is actually still in the parking lot. It's like a jalopy now, and we're hoping to auction it. It's still in the parking lot. It's not a police vehicle.
You didn't ask to use a police vehicle?
Let's get back on track.
No, I didn't.
I have a problem if Lizette was out using a police vehicle, and you guys knew it and you didn't do anything about it.
All right, he, he has ways...
We don't control police vehicles.
You don't control...
I don't control the police vehicles, the chief does.
Public safety officer, Google.
The chief does.
Now, the other thing is this, the public safety officer...
Go ahead.
Um, will, uh, will be riding around probably in a, in a borough car, because they're not gonna take a job in their own car. I wouldn't think so.
Look, I don't envision them patrolling at all. I envision them...
They'll be giving out tickets, or like parking tickets or something?
No, 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 you're missing the point. This is a person who's supposed to oversee senior management and liaison with the council and the administrator for, for police issues, administrative issues.
I get it, okay.
Okay? Administrative, not law enforcement.
If he finds, if she finds there are administrative deficiencies, does this person have any authority to do anything about it, being a non-law enforcement person? They do, what do they have? What, what abilities do they have?
The envisioning of the PSD director position is to governance, to set policies, to make sure policies are followed, to implement the Attorney General Guidelines on Internal Affairs. That's an example. So he's going to look at the script.
Well, there should be job description.
There is a job description.
I mean, that's...
There is a job description.
Not unique to each town.
Many towns have PSDs, that's right.
Which ones?
Names up.
Which ones?
Edge Water.
Law roll scrap.
Edge Water, don't you?
You know what? I really don't need to debate with you.
I'm not debating you.
All right, I understand, I understand. I'm not even voting. I'm not even voting.
You don't want to move on that, I expect it to depend on you?
I'm not even voting. All I know is that I had four different ordinances that I looked at in conjunction with this. Many towns have them, and then eliminate them, and then bring them back, which apparently is the case in Engwood Cliffs.
Now, if we get this person, and we then have to supply them with a car, because we gotta buy a car too, and ensure...
I don't think anyone's here have a car, actually.
This is a public safety director creation of a position.
No, look, everyone else comes to work in their own car.
Okay, but then how do you expect that person to go and take command of, of my department?
John, we're, we're not doing employment in monuments in this, in this ordinance.
You need to understand what this public safety director is about.
Okay.
Okay? The person is not a law enforcement official.
Right.
The person has no jurisdiction over the police department, really.
I disagree with that.
Well, okay, we disagree, that's okay. That's fine. Uh, I would like to...
It certainly is a position allowable under state law, okay? So, I, we didn't just dream it up.
State law on the civilian side, not the law of the citizen.
State statutes provide for a public safety director, which can be a director of the police department, yes.
Okay, they can be a director of the police department, but not, but not a law enforcement official, correct?
My understanding is he's not a law enforcement, he doesn't have a badge.
Okay, okay.
Ma'am?
All right.
I think...
Yes.
Well, let me recognize you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like to have a floor?
May I?
Yes.
I don't know who to direct a question to, mayor, or council, or administrator.
I thought you were answering her question.
I am answering her, but I'm, I'm asking for clarification. I believe our current borough administrator is perfectly capable of doing all the tasks that a public safety director, that that job description entails. Am I incorrect in that?
I'm not responding to polls, definitely not.
Okay.
I refuse, not the polls.
But administratively is what we're talking about, so I don't blame you there.
That's a good point, though, administratively, the capability is there.
Administrative, well, I can do any of it.
I'm sure you can do any of it, right?
Sure.
So that's one of my objections to, yeah, that's one of my objections to public safety directors, I think we already have a qualified person.
We already have a qualified person, right? Doctor Bruce, thank you. Thanks very much.
Anybody else? Just me.
You know, I, I've had conversations with our administrator several times, relative to one issue. Firstly, you know, the new, the way this has been written, the overtime has been taken out, performing and patrol duties has been taken out, assuming command of the same has been taken out, establishment, uh, staffing levels has been taken out from the previous ordinance, so day-to-day operations was never the intention of, of this position. And I've also spoken to numerous officials with our administrator, Catherine, relative to overtime, I've also had discussion with the chief on overtime. You know, there's, and it's okay for us to disagree with the chief, you know, we've got, you know, one... Other questions? And spoken, you know, there's different ways to curtail the overtime or control the overtime. Catherine, as administrator, without, you expressed to me, without being in the police department, it's been very, it's a challenge to have the checks around, to make sure...
I can't, I can't justify, or let me not say justify. I can't authorize overtime if I'm not in the police department, which I don't plan on being in the police department, before it occurs. You have to compensate the police if they already worked. So, yes, I, I have it accurate. So, yes, if you were to have somebody that's gonna authorize overtime, which is outside of the chief's authority, um, that person would have that responsibility, I'm assuming by source.
What's the current status right now in terms of the budget and overtime? Where are we?
Um... I think we're at 240 hours.
240,000?
I'm sorry. So what's it, uh, $40,000 apart?
And what's the budget?
307,000.
300,000.
300.
So it sounds like we're, um, we're gonna have a problem. Okay, um, are we done?
No.
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
No, it's just the ordinance.
This is borough 132 Hollywood. I'm very confused, I'm sitting here. Are you planning to vote tonight on that you're gonna create this position?
Yes.
In that case, you have to already know, or you have no right to vote on it, what the job entails and what you plan to pay for.
It's a two-step process, ma'am.
No. You don't, you don't create a job with no idea what it's gonna cost, and vote on it with no idea what you, what you're voting on, without knowing, without knowing the salary and the benefits and, and all the details, or else you're, you're voting on inadequate information, which makes it sound pretty stupid.
So I've been advised that this is a two-step process. You create the position, and then you, you create the actual finite job description and the, the package, which I will rely on.
Which comes by the ordinance as well.
What, what is this package? Uh, am I, am I...
There will be a separate ordinance for salary if this position is...
You can vote for a position that you don't know how much it's gonna pay for, that you're expecting me...
No position in the borough code has a salary attached to it.
So you send out, you send out a note, come and apply for a job. So, you send out a note, come and apply for a job, we don't know what will pay you, we're not sure what package we're going to give you, so why don't you submit a resume?
We're not at that point, and we didn't fall off the bumpkin truck, ma'am. We are doing this the way everybody else does, okay? We are creating the ordinance for the position, just like all the other positions in this borough, okay? Look at our ordinances. And then, from there, we go to the next step, which is we create the job description.
All right, so let's assume you pass it tonight, and then you come up with a number, you get to vote on whether or not that number works? Whether that fits into the budget? I mean, where does this money, you know, come out of?
I assure you that we have been nothing but fiscally conservative and responsible since the day I came into office.
I'm asking you, where does this money come out of if you vote on the position today and you don't dispute that not established, what you're paying for your benefits packages, what your salary packages, what your vehicle reserve is not? So, then you have another step, and then you create all these things, and where does the funding come from on my behalf?
All of these things will be done. If we decide to go out, it is the borough's usual procedure that when we advertise for a position to fill it, the mayor and council vote on it by resolution. It is the borough's procedure that I've learned here, sitting here, that every time we want to fill a position that is already in the code or created in the code, we determine the salary, and it goes in a salary ordinance. Nothing is hidden, nothing is being guessed at, nothing is being overlooked. We are following the procedure that this borough has always followed. All the positions in the borough are created, and when you go to fill it, you need to set a salary by salary ordinance. Specifically, it's the subject of negotiation, and it's not going to be approved unless it's part of the budget. So, that's the way it's going to go.
So, you have a second vote on whether or not you decide to have...
This is an ordinance to create a position. It has a first reading and a second reading. The next step is the next step, it may come up next month, it may come up two months from now. I don't know.
Anybody else? Yes.
You're welcome. Thank you. We do have a lot of litigation in the police department, and most of the really, in fact, all of the really disturbing stuff originated before the current administration.
If you can't sit there and listen, then you have to leave, sir. You, in particular, because you've been doing this all night, okay? Thank you.
The stuff with things like ignoring allegations of sexual abuse of a minor, the stuff about interfering in criminal investigations, that kind of stuff. We have tried to run systems for a very long time, it's not working. Year after year, we get very disturbing lawsuits, not the PBA, but citizens, soon. And like Mr. Sager, I've read the litigation, but unlike Mr. Sager, I've gone way beyond the constraints. I'm very fond of the citizens, sir. You get some really fun documents there, like attachments to motions. I have lots of deposition transcripts, I have lots of exhibits. Modified personal favorites is an exhibit which is a report, an allegation of criminal activity, and it comes together with a deposition transcript in which a member of our police department taught, who was related to the alleged burglar, spoke to one of the witnesses, which if I did, I'd probably get charged with witness handling. There's just, there is another set of things that I got in civil case group where there seems to be a major contradiction between the testimony of a retired police officer and a retired police officer. I think we need to try a public safety director because what we have now is not working. These lawsuits are not little nuisance things. Some of them are very serious allegations of very serious violations of people's rights. And I realize that occasionally, every police department has one of those, but we seem to have way more than our fair share.
Yes.
Thank you, D. Gregorio, 165 Charlotte Place. The mayor is apparent, I'm sorry for this. I wrote actually to the mayor and the council and others concerning hiring, concerning our town hiring a public safety director. Taxpaying residents of Engleclips are the big losers here. The mayor, a puppet of the council president, is no leader. So weak in leadership, he must create a new position at our expense to control an excellent police department. Livid with our money, unable to forge relationships, he had a visionless project driven by the vengeance of the council president. Residents should show up in clothes at the next council meeting and make a statement at the ballot box. Shame, shame, shame. Now, the mayor responded to me in this manner. Good morning, Mr. D. Gregorio. Attacking people around an issue never solves a problem, and that may be why you have never solved a problem. And then he says, and I asked him to respond to me, "I reserve further comment and action. Have a good holiday weekend, Mario." Mario, what action? He said, "You reserve further comment and action." What action specifically did you have in mind that you were going to reserve?
My comments are reserved, and my actions are reserved. You feel free to attack people, not issues, keep doing it.
Well, I will repeat that...
You are an adult, you get to make your decisions. You've been informed.
The creation of this position is indicative of a complete failure of leadership on the mayor's hot mayor. Mario Crandick is a failed leader because he does not have the capacity to reach out to the head of the police department and forge a working relationship. And there are probably reasons for that, and they probably rest on the council president. So, I will say now that this is an entire folly on the mayor's heart and the council president, and it is a waste of every hard-earned taxpayers' money that we earn every day. I don't mind paying money if we're going to see a difference in the quality of right in Engleclips on the first one to pay extra. This will have no difference whatsoever. It will give certain people on the council control over somebody they chose not to like for one reason or another. And what has happened in the past, as other people say here, needs to stay in the past. This mayor has dragged the past into the present to justify his idiotic actions of the president. If he were a man, he would reach out across the aisle, not be a puppet of others, and he would have a nice drink with the chief and say, "Let's resolve things, and let's have..."
I would, the Lama Mexico was close.
"...what we can possibly have." Unfortunately, that did not happen. A complete failure in leadership, and I would say that this mayor really needs to be recalled. Thank you.
So, in terms of financial responsibility and fiscal folly, we as a community, we waste and spend more money doing nothing and needing things the way they are than having a public safety director. We have to deal with this, and I've tried to deal with it different ways, but Mr. D. Gregorio, we are spending dollar after dollar, probably a million dollars, as I mentioned, since 2010, dealing with litigations, and that's money that could have been spent to, that's money, excuse me, excuse me, that's money that should have been spent on a better park. That's money that should have been spent on parks. You don't have the floor, you're going to have to leave, sir. Thank you.
You're going to pick me up, I'm leaving because I want to go home and go to sleep. This parent wants to rest.
Cover the cage.
All right, cover the cage. So, we spend more money by not doing anything, and I'm only calling on people once, so the people have already spoken.
That's not going to cut.
No, no, no one got called twice.
No, twice.
No, she was... No, 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 you're confused.
I have something to say, and I'm...
No, no, you don't get... You're out of order. Then you have to leave, if you're out of order. I want you to respect this council. I want you to respect this council. Yes, ma'am, she's leaving, thank you. And for the record, people who spoke earlier at caucus, and people who spoke during the public torts or the regular meetings, are allowed to speak again here because it's different. Hi.
State Fair, 49th Avenue. I'm speaking against the ordinance to create a position of the public safety director. My concerns are the same as they were at the last meeting where this was discussed and was set aside to be realized. I don't think that enough was taken out of the first class when we needed a position at all. I agree with the previous speakers, this is a complete waste of taxpayer money, it's adding a layer of political bureaucracy that is not necessary. We have an excellent police department and excellent chief, and I would say that we would have been much better served as a town had the new mayor and council reached across and spoke to the chief and tried to work with the chief. Now, that being said, I don't think that this ordinance, the way that it's written, is the same thing as the last one. You are saying, "Oh, it's administrative, it's this, it's that," but the ordinance still says a lot more than that, and that concerns me as a resident. I do not want a civilian who serves at the pleasure of the council to know anything private about any of our residents, and I don't think that they should be privileged to have information into internal affairs, either police matters, and they should stay with the police.
And I agree, and they won't. They won't have that access. So, your problems are solved.
Well, they have to oversee internal affairs.
Procedures and policy, not particular matters.
So, we will not have, you will not be seeing anything private in internal affairs?
No, procedures and policies.
I don't think that's spelled out very clearly in the ordinance. See, that's, I think, the problem here.
That's clear.
What you're saying and what is written is not, doesn't jive, you know, a hundred percent, and whether it does or it doesn't, I just, I can't, I can't get the ordinance, I can't get the creating of the position, it's a waste of taxpayer money, and it don't support more litigation. I really don't think it's worth it for all of us. I don't.
So, what everyone who comes and says, takes a microphone and they say, "Look, you're not working with people, you're reaching across the aisle," I've been saying since day one of my administration, hey, look, I'll work with anyone who's willing to work with me. And along the way, I have found some very interesting people to work with because I never thought they would work with me. So, for all of those who are still shunning the opportunity to work with me, there's still an opportunity, but now you have to tell me that you want to work with me. I can't discern that you're willing to work with me. So, again, if you're willing to work with me, I'll work with you. That coin is all kind of plunging in my head here.
Number 41, 1065. I want to once again say that I'm totally against this position completely. Official responsibility, what is it going to force up? I can only imagine, and with the board's responsibility, they're going to come and take it. What I'm trying to understand is actually, how did we agree as mayor and council to create this ordinance, and who was involved in deciding what the responsibility of this ordinance would be?
As I said the last time, I worked with Councilman Lou on the writing this, I did my own research, I read the state statutes, I read the current code, I read other municipal ordinances, and I also did research in state law. So, I got built up on it. I previously written a PSD for a very urban town, so this is different, obviously, and that department had many police officers.
From the council, you worked with?
Right, I did consult with Mr. Woo. He gave me information, and then in the rewrite, he was active with it as well.
Okay.
And I took the council's correction, because they said to take the volunteer fire department out. I think at times, I mean, it was...
No, I'm no accident, but basically, Mr. Woo...
Councilman Woo, yeah.
Councilman Woo, sorry.
Yeah, he assisted directly.
Is assisted in the language, yes, and responsible, right? Now, did you meet with the chief to discuss the position and how it may help the police department?
The police committee did have one meeting with the chief.
We had one meeting? During all these discussions, you've had one meeting with the chief regarding this position?
I also had one meeting with the chief.
Okay, and have you, I know that this position is being created because of lawsuits. I reserve my own opinion as to when those lawsuits took place, except for the one with the bayonet and the officer sleeping on his desk, I haven't seen one particular officer mirror, which this council basically dismissed all the charges against him. So, with all these litigations...
Do you feel better about this? I mean, did you mention his name like that?
Yes, I do. I do. You mentioned...
It's more than lawsuits. It's more than just lawsuits.
Quite often.
There's a lot of...
You said that that was a big part of it.
It's a big part of it, right, and I'm saying there's more.
Did I say that?
There's a lot of dysfunction.
Did I?
You may.
Okay.
Hang on a minute.
What I would like to ask is, Mr. Woo, have you read all of these lawsuits against the town?
I have.
Okay, because that differs a little bit, so I'm glad you brought it up, up to date with that. In reading the responsibilities of this potential position, they may have knowledge and ability to law enforcement theory and principles and practices. That's number three.
Ability to...
Ability to manage and prevent litigation, court decisions and how they affect public safety operations. These are things that they may have, not things that they must have. I mean, I don't understand if we're creating a position to try to employ somebody who's going to supervise and hopefully somehow or another reduce litigation or be responsible for how they're handled, how is it that they don't have some type of a law background or a background in administration? I mean, it's not a qualification, and only two things that are qualifications here are A and B, and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't really require them. I mean, our police officers have to have a BA. They can't have experience of ten years or more to get a job in this town. They must have a BA.
Well, now they do, before they never had it.
Right, now they do. Absolutely.
I know.
So, and kudos, I think that's great. But what I'm saying is, is this in particular position doesn't require a BA.
Yeah, but this is not the end for the newspaper.
But this is what we're voting on, this is not a requirement.
What is this backroom here that we can...
I appreciate myself because I can appreciate, and I'm not ridiculing, and I'm...
Well, I'm not telling you that a lot of people being very...
I'm asking questions, you know what? You're talking to me right now, I'm asking questions.
Well, there is...
I want to answer today.
And all I said was that in the job description...
Right, but this is the ordinance we're voting on, so is this part of the job description? Is it an either-or?
No, I think you could add more.
But that's the intention, why isn't it there? If they have to have some type of legal background so that they can try to deal with conflict, how does somebody deal with four decisions and how they affect public safety operations if they don't have experience?
Stop, you asked a question.
It's saying may, and it's not that they have to have that experience. So, we'll be looking to somebody who has more experience than what's listed here as mandatory.
There's a good reason for it to be written that way. The issue is that there's many well-seasoned police officers who are now retired who don't have DA's. have DAs or BSs or JDs or MBAs. Because at that time, a lot of police departments didn't require them. So we didn't want to limit ourselves in terms of having people whom were very well experienced running a police department, such as the gentleman that was up here earlier. I don't know if he does or doesn't, but there's a lot of people of generations earlier that don't have those educational qualifications, but they have great field experience, great administrative experience, so...
Agree 100%. I agree 100%.
So there's a reason for it.
And if a police officer has 10 years of experience, is he not just as qualified without a DA because he has...
I don't, I mean, you're... There's like a lot of questions, so go ahead.
The question was why, what I mean here.
So that's why, I gave you an answer.
So are we looking to hire retired police officers?
Now she's gone somewhere.
This is that.
No, no, you asked that... No, no, look, I know what you're asking. You asked at the last meeting, or somebody else did from that corner. Look, we're not hiring Carol's husband, okay? That's what we're doing, all right? That's what you're asking. No, that's what you're asking. Let's move forward, come on, come on. Come on, you know, let's go.
I think you would like to sit there and be arrogant and nasty to me.
Just, I'm not being arrogant and nasty, I mean, look, I'm not sure if you're...
Look in, because that's not how I operate. You can treat anybody else in life like that.
Go ahead. But you're...
I'm going to continue with my concerns.
What are your concerns?
I also have a concern with the salary of this position. I know you're saying that this is not the way it's handled and that you create a position, but if you've been sitting there and you've been talking about this as a mayor and council, how do you even decide to create a position that hasn't existed without discussing salaries?
That's been asked and answered. It's been asked and answered.
And you know what, but it's not okay. You have to have some idea as to what you're going to say.
That's fine, then you're not okay with it. We answered the question earlier. Go ahead, what else?
So I guess, you know, I can go over all the things here that they're responsible for. My problem is, is that you don't seem to have them being required to have the experience that would be needed to handle all these responsibilities.
Thank you.
So I think you need to rethink the qualifications in this position.
We've thought about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your feelings.
Don't worry, two prevail.
Yeah, I'm reading your...
Mary O'Shea, 11th Avenue. I'm in favor of a police director. I mentioned it when we first introduced it, when it included Hardwater. I know Joe Delaney, who has been the police chief in Corradas, retired, went to Ramsey as Public Safety Director, Police Director, same type of thing, and straightened out that department with his years of experience. In Palisade Park, Michael Vitri retired from the police department.
Excuse me, excuse me. In the foyer, leave if you're going to make noise. In the back of the room, leave if you're going to make noise. Mary O'Shea has the floor right now. Give her the respect she deserves.
Michael Vitri retired as the police chief and then was hired by the Borough Palisade Park for, I don't know, three or five years as Public Safety Director. He did not work full-time. He worked part-time, okay? And nobody's saying this position might not be a full-time position, might be a part-time position. In the salary that he received as a retired police chief, he did not pay pension benefits because he didn't want to impact his pension. He didn't take medical, he already had it. So a lot of the times when a retired police chief takes a position like this, it's a very... It's cost-saving for the borough because they just have the salary for whatever they're engaging them in. And the men are already retired, it's letting them pension, they got all their benefits. So you can get a lot of experience. And like the mayor said, many people don't have a college degree from years ago, wasn't a requirement. The requirement was a high school diploma and had to take a test. And then in recent years, we didn't even give a test. We just hired a friend of a friend, okay? And I've had good experience with the Englewood Police Department, I've had a few bad experiences with the Englewood Police Department. And when people talk about patrol, and I was thinking of what Tony was saying with the cars speeding. A few years ago, I went to a talk by Declan Scanlon, who was an assemblyman in the state of New Jersey, talking about the red light cameras. And he lives out near Dover or someplace. And he said when he drives down the highway and he sees a police car pass on the side of the road doing a radar trap, he feels that's a policeman we don't need because they should be controlling the residents, the streets, the businesses. They shouldn't be sitting on the side of the road trying to catch somebody that's speeding down the highway. And I had incidents going up 9W a week ago. Vic was on Tuesday, and I had to go babysit in Westwood. And I saw the police car sitting by the 9W on Southbound Lane, right by the current LG building where the road was cut in. He was sitting there trying to catch speeders going down the street. Now, I'm sure Tony would appreciate if he was sitting on John Street and monitoring the town instead of monitoring the highway. But that, we talked about needing police officers, that's a police officer we don't need sitting on the highway. He should be in taking care of the security of the residents and situations like that. So I'm in favor of a Public Safety Director, I'm looking for an improvement in the town, I'm looking for an improvement in the morale, and I'm looking for less lawsuits.
Thank you. Yes. I think Mr. Slater, I can still hear you in the foyer, can you please go outside and speak?
Maria Hilard, fully contacted, actually, that's really disturbing. It's very...
It's disrespectful, what they're saying.
And you know something, I sit here week after week, we sit here very quietly, we listen to what these people are saying, and then when somebody gets up to say something, we have to hear constant gibberish coming from outside and...
Well, that's because the rules don't apply to everybody, apparently. Mr. Slater, Mrs. Slater, can you just go outside and talk? Your voices are carrying, they're disturbing us.
I mean, they do.
Will you please leave?
It's not being rude to ask for them to be quiet because it comes in here, go outside and talk. Nobody is saying that you are not allowed to talk.
You can't close the doors, this is a public meeting.
He's closing the door.
So, I wasn't going to get up to that seriously. I wish I got up earlier though. What I want to say is that I think that we should all be giving you guys some credit for trying to work things out. And whether you agree with, you know, having somebody do this or not, it really is up to discussing more, making decisions for us residents. However, what I want to point out here is, this is not the residents. This is not the residents. There are 5,200 residents in Englewood. And meeting after meeting after meeting, it's beating up, beating up, beating up, beating up, making innuendos about Mrs. McMorris, making innuendos about Mayor Panja. You guys have not been given an ounce of respect from day one. And I'm sorry to compare what you want, I'm a really well-tempered person and I like everybody, I really do. If I wanted to you, I like where you feel, I like the daughters, I like everybody. And it's hard for me to sit here, meeting after meeting, listening to this. We've heard a thousand times what they don't agree with this paper, how many times? Is there 100 people here today? We have to hear the same questions, the same innuendos, the same crazy ideas, and I'm seriously, it's absurd, this is ridiculous. We need to go home and rest. We have families at home. And we're trying to do something right for our town. And then they don't agree with what I think and I don't agree with what they think, but we don't have a right to have their opinion. And it's just getting a little bit too crazy in this place, it really is. I really feel bad for Carol, Carol, every meeting, I hear innuendos about your husband and I feel really bad because I know Mike McMorris, he is the sweetest guy. He just is so quiet, he never says anything. As God is my witness, I have never heard a negative comment from that man about anybody. So it kind of hurts the soul.
I don't need to be taken apart.
I'm understanding you.
Let go. They have to live with how they act.
This is crazy, this is crazy.
Let go.
You don't even know what the facts are and they're already coming up with these crazy stories.
Let go. Go ahead, Gloria, you think it's funny, right?
No, I'm just looking at the case.
Yeah, I know, you think it's funny.
I'm very calm. There are people that are not here to defend themselves.
So we have a hand in the back.
We're at 9W Drive. In light of all of these discussions, I think we really do need to hear from somebody again who probably knows far more about this than anybody sitting up there or anybody, so I would yield my time to former Chief O'Keefe for his comments, please.
No, you don't, there's no yielding this time.
I don't. If it's in Robert School's quarter, maybe.
No, I was advised by council, Chief O'Keefe, you know, I think you're very eloquent.
Well, you've published your book of Robert School's, please, show it to me.
You've spoken, you're very eloquent. That's fine, sir. I think, you know, you were respectful last time around, so it's fine.
I just want to make sure that you understand fully the responsibilities and rights of the Public Safety Director. The operating of the police department, it seems that some community may first discuss first what it is. A Public Safety Director is no legal right to be in armed police, to have a police radio. The operations of the police department are solely the responsibility and title 40 of the police chief. The Public Safety Director cannot look at internal affairs complaints, conduct investigations, put on patrol, undertake arrests, have no police powers, do not carry a gun, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of the things that people are bringing out with respect to what's included in this ordinance, it really should be clarified so that people have a full and expanded capacity to be civilian authority given to a Public Safety Director, it's not statutory, and it has nothing to do with law enforcement. So you simply are not in a position to delegate responsibility, perhaps not by statutory support, with regard to safety directives. So it should be clear to everyone that this is simply an administrative liaison position, it has no ability to go to emergency scene, it cannot conduct investigations.
We agree, sir.
So I just want to make sure the public is aware of that because it seems that there seems to be some disagreement.
Well, we've been over everything already. This is... I understand, but it does also say it here, and it talks about governance of the police department. Okay? That's what it talks about.
Well, it says other things in terms of responsibilities and qualifications. And one that really disturbed me, and I wasn't aware of that being present on this hearing, is the appointee shall generally possess knowledge and ability acquired, are required to enter the job, and are required to obtain such knowledge for a reasonable period of time. That strikes me as saying that you're given the most important position of emergency services within this borough to someone who doesn't necessarily have the knowledge and is going to learn on the job.
Okay, that's not what it says, but thank you.
If I just reiterate this...
I understand. It says a college degree, I believe, or 10 years of experience.
And I respect your question. I'm not just doing the best that's being done. So I just, that there are local issues and people that have knowledge to look into this. I just want to assure that you're doing this properly.
And I, thank you for your comments. And I want you and everyone else to also understand just the magnitude of the issues and the facts surrounding those issues that have come to light since I became mayor. Many of these litigations had sealed records, so you could never actually look at the level of dysfunction in the facts, which come to light after a while. And there's a problem, when a PBA official comes and stands where you are and says, "Hey, we don't feel safe here." That's what they did. So I need to deal with it, sir, and I respect you, I hope you have the same level of respect for me, frankly. Thank you. No, it's another story. Have a motion to cloud the public vote in the hold? Oh, yes.
Patrolmen around this Englewood Police. Not working? So you guys speak louder. Patrolmen around this Englewood Police.
It's working, it's working.
Check it out, check it out.
Put the red light on.
I'd like to clarify what you said, okay? We have our faith in higher-ups. We're not divided in this department. It wasn't a secret meeting, what you think, maybe came to you to talk about. You're proceeding to the public, you're all right. I don't know where you got the idea that we came to you for help or to complain about higher-ups. I can't reintroduce myself as one of the new members of the bargaining unit.
Right.
So I don't know...
But you wouldn't do it anywhere by in private, sir.
No, we wanted to do it on the neutral ground where you felt comfortable.
I feel comfortable anywhere. I feel comfortable anywhere, sir.
And we're going to talk only here.
Yep, I feel comfortable.
It was a meeting, was it not?
No, it was more than that.
Then what was it?
It was more than that, we talked issues. That's fine. You're free to come in here and say what you want.
There's no division.
I understand why you're here now, but you would not have done that before until I raised it, right? You didn't want anyone to know you met with me.
What you said was, let's say that was the case.
There's two PBA's, right? This is one PBA here, and I admire you, but the other one is the one where you don't want to be seen in public. There's two PBA's.
The other one is all duty at home.
No, that's the one that calls me at 9:00 PM on a Sunday to meet with you, okay? That's not normal.
This is who you are as an individual. We learn who you are as an individual.
Right, likewise.
And keep that to ourselves, okay?
Likewise.
I think it's obvious to most around here anyway.
That's fine.
That's very disrespectful.
This one is extremely disrespectful to all residents of the borough.
You're really being disrespectful.
No, actually, you know what, sir? Actually, are you in or out of uniform right now?
I'm actual.
You look like half in, half out. Okay, well, look, you could stay to the issues, don't attack the person, attack the issue, okay? And facts have no feelings, right? Those are the things that I keep telling you, all of you, all right? So here we go. You guys called me. I didn't call you, let me finish, let me finish. You're being tough and I want to tell you what I think of that. You guys called me at 9:00 PM on a Sunday wanting to meet. I didn't call you, you called me. And I said, "Yes, I'll meet you right now." And you guys decided to meet. And I said, "Where do we want to meet?" My office. No office, no, no, too public, too public, I don't want, we don't want to be seen with you.
That's not what I said, I didn't make...
Well, no, the other person did, Officer Lee did. So we met, we met somewhere private, okay? And quite frankly, we had a good discussion. We did. But I'm telling you, for your own good, you guys are a Public Safety Director. And someday, someday...
And we expressed why we didn't want...
And someday, you will thank me. You will.
We'll see. We'll see if that's the case. However, let's just go down the road that you said that we were coming to you for help. If that was the case, in your professional opinion, if I was to come to you, "Hey, hey, we need help, I don't trust so-and-so," do you think it would be a professional manner to put the two patrolmen on the spot who have to then come to work and try to paint the picture of division in our society and what we have to do?
There's no division, there's facts, there's facts, okay? You're a police officer and truthfulness is important.
I came to ask you for help. I can't reintroduce myself, I wanted to learn about the college.
It was a word, yeah. That's fine. Like you said, it could be between us.
Don't try to make it like this division. I have full faith in our chief, I have full faith in our colleagues.
Of course you don't, of course you don't.
Absolutely.
Of course. Of course you do, he just clapped his hands, he's very proud of you.
You guys fool play with me.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. No, no, you don't have the floor, sir. You don't have the floor.
I know, but you should tell the truth.
You don't have the floor.
Tell the truth.
About what?
About, you're just lying, remember?
No, not true, not true.
Oh, here's the officer Lee's here. Wait, when you said you didn't want to be seen in public, who I said was all duty.
How did they get here, somebody called them?
Of course they did.
I mean, the chief is looking from the back there, glaring at us.
Guys.
I did call him when I learned about what was said.
I'm not saying that.
Who told you?
I'm saying the chief is...
My coworkers.
Right, okay, good. But why, thank you for coming. I, I still think that you guys are, uh, highly regarded here in town, day to day. I think you guys do a good job. I, I think your senior leadership, and you're not part of that leadership, is not doing such a good job, okay? I'm very upfront with you guys. I'm telling you exactly tonight where I told you only that, okay?
It's like that we met and we were speaking with you, and you twisted it around, just shows...
No, no, look what, look at what happened after we met. Think about it. Look at what you guys did after we met.
What did we do after we met?
After we met.
Is this really...
No, okay, we'll leave it alone. Council's calling me not to get into that.
So you said there was something after we met?
Of course there was.
That triggered you?
Yeah. Look, you guys, you guys, and I know deep down you agree with me, you need a public safety director, more now than you ever did, okay? Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
We don't need them.
Good. Good, thank you for your comments. Okay. Yes.
Diane Clark, thirteen, thirteen minutes. They don't even know, so it's difficult to call me. However, it disturbs me greatly, the disrespect we're facing, the circuit, and lack of people who come up to speak in a very serious manner, about very seriously, and you see they're actually laughing out loud. The first person who should be showing respect to the community, either side, should not sound there laughing.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anyone wishing to close the public portion?
Second.
One favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Ordinance, okay, we need a mo, a motion for the ordinance...
Motion to, uh, for the ordinance to, that request to add new provisions to create position of public safety director.
For a second, Mark Park, second. A roll call, please? Nope.
Councilpersons of Ursa?
Absolutely not.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMaro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Mayor, it's a tie? Passes.
Okay, uh, we have the first reading of ordinance seventeen dash thirteen, and ordinance fixing salaries, wages, and compensation for all salary-appointed elected officers within the borough of Englewood Cliffs, in the county of Bergen, and the state of New Jersey.
Uh, we, we need a motion, one second.
One more.
Need a second?
Second. Okay, um, and then there'll be a, a public hearing on this at the next council meeting.
I need a roll call. Councilpersons of Ursa?
Uh, yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMaro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing for ordinance seventeen thirteen will be October eleventh.
Okay, um, going from my right to left, is there any councilperson who wishes to give us a committee report?
My name's Joel Goodwin.
Thank you.
Um, I have a committee report. On Monday, September...
Which committee?
Uh, Board of Health. On Monday, September twenty-fifth, um, from four to seven, we're giving out flu vaccines. So I'm going to be there. Um, it's going to be held at the community building at four eighty-eight Hudson Terrace, and then there'll be additional parking at four eighty-two Hudson Terrace. Um, so I hope everybody shows up. Um, I, there's a twenty dollar fee, and people with Medicare can bring their Medicare cards, and I believe those will be free. So I hope to see everyone there, bringing my seat.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Howard, do you have any?
Um, nothing from the transportation.
Anybody else?
Um, Mayor, I just have, uh, two hours, well, Community Night out with, that was from the, um, yeah.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
No.
No, we can't.
Yeah.
Yeah. Community Night out was August twenty-second.
Hold on a second.
And it was a, it was a great success. I thank, um, all of the great volunteers that we had in, um, the, you know, as successful as it was, I think we had eight hundred people to actually outdo last year.
Yeah, it was tremendous. Thank you for organizing that and everybody who worked on that. And, uh, DPW did a great job. Thank you guys.
Everybody.
Thank you. You did a fantastic job.
We saw it.
Catherine organized it all.
And, um, now our next event is, uh, the five K, um, race on, it's this Sunday, actually. And, um, I thank everybody up here that did sign up, now from the move, now from the park, there. I'm asking my three colleagues on the other side to please sign up, show up, help out, okay? Um, you know, excuse me. I didn't interrupt you, Alan. I didn't interrupt you. But I just...
She's accusatory.
She, she's asking you to come on Sunday to help.
I'm asking you to come and to help out.
Don't we always do?
No, you don't. You actually don't. But I'm asking you to please come and help this Sunday. So I'm just asking you to come and help. You actually didn't sign up yet, none of you. So I'm asking you to please sign up and support your borough events. Thank you, all right? Um, that being said, um, so the residents can still sign up online through Friday, and, um, otherwise you have to sign up in person the day of the event. Fun one starts at eight thirty for the children, uh, and, um, adults nine fifteen. Uh, it's, the race starts, but sign up, you can start as early as eight o'clock. That's it, Mayor, for those who are...
Anybody else?
I see a mayor, uh, coming over to come to discuss about a community service in the T-Grand's case. Uh, tomorrow, we want to talk to you and discuss that. One more, your case.
Thank you.
DPW, I just want to announce, uh, February twenty-one, the spectacle of that has been placed, nine to one, at DPW. So cardboard, paper, clothing, shoes, et cetera. Uh, also want to just thank, um, Mark and his team for cleaning up the field on Friday. Um, under special circumstances, there was an event that took place, the field needed, uh, needed some, uh, emergency, I don't know, uh, work done. Police Department took care of a issue over at ninety-nine, ten, nine forty, Sylvan Avenue, on nine eleven, there was an incredible threat. Uh, they took care of it, they needed to go through all the cars, uh, to make sure the issue was going to go. So, thank, thank the police department for doing that.
Okay, thank you. Old business, uh, we've heard on the B-three zone rehabilitation proposals already.
I need to make a motion on that, Mayor.
Okay.
A council vote to just send it back to the planning board one last time for final review, uh, given all the information that they've heard, um, over the last couple of meetings and the public input, if they could review it and, uh, make a motion for that.
One second, ma'am. Just to be clear, this is not a vote for rehabilitation. This is a vote for the planning board to, to relook at everything again.
That was McMaro and Evers, okay. Councilpersons of Ursa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMaro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Thank you. And, and just a point of observation, that this review that the planning board is going to do on our behalf is not a required outlet under statute. No. Just like the other night's meeting, it's an extra layer of...
Extra layer of... Technically, just so I could start.
Okay, um...
Mayor, the only other thing, is that update on the, I'm sorry, on the, uh, the Borough newsletter. Catherine has been working diligently with me. I really appreciate your help, Catherine. Um, so far, I think the articles we had in, uh, Shade Tree, Police Department, um, Planning Board, um, seniors, uh, and DPW, just a couple of, um, couple of departments we're waiting for, and then we're going to start laying it out, hopefully by Friday, we'll get a draft in. And, um...
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Was that had a, an issue regarding RFQs of two thousand and eighteen, and you want to go ahead and request?
Uh, yes, I'm just requesting, requesting a motion to start preparing RFQs so we can advertise in a timely manner to have them back by November, by November for two thousand and eighteen. And I would like a motion in a second?
So moved, just checking.
One favor?
Thank you.
Uh, park bench program, um, this is the bench program where people could buy tributes, and, um, we also have some corporate sponsors coming in. Mark, where do we stand on that?
Uh, thanks for the reminder, I just have to, um, pass her in, as you probably saw by Friday.
Okay, great.
And the first ones are going in where? Bush.
Floyd. This is the park bench program where we're putting some park benches around town on public land. First one are going in this week.
You think there's a ribbon hanging on it?
I think we set that up once.
I have scissors.
Yes, it's this week.
I have a big scissors.
Coa update, Amory?
I think I already said it.
Okay, you got that. For a little bit, we did it. Want to just give us the three litigation updates?
Um, just very, very quickly, uh, we had closed sessions on these matters. They are all litigation matters, so we're not going to discuss them. Uh, the case of Joseph Agaro, Karen Geiger, and Melanie Sarming versus the borough of Englewood Cliffs, uh, at all, is pending. There are motions scheduled, uh, filed by the borough to dismiss that case and for other relief. The case of us versus the, uh, Patrolman Us versus the borough, Doc, uh, Doc in, in Bergen, was dismissed by court order and written decision. Time to appeal has passed, and no appeal has been received. Uh, there was a very good written decision of that dismissal of that officer's case. Uh, there was a dismissal, uh, last week of the, um, the police department's, uh, litigation for PBA versus the borough of Englewood Cliffs and others, which is in the United States District Court. An order of dismissal was entered last week in that case. Um, and, uh, there is a period of time during which they can refile or attempt to refile. This was in the context of a motion to dismiss by the borough, so that, so that motion to dismiss by the borough and borough defendants was granted, but they do have an opportunity to refile.
Okay, thank you. Just in...
I need a motion.
In, um, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I want to make a motion.
What was that to make a motion on?
Well, are we done with, I'm sorry, I interrupted. Why don't you finish, Mayor?
Thank you. So, um, under new business, we have, um, a couple of things...
I know, old business, I want to make a motion.
An old business?
Yes, I want to make a motion to repair a weight field, and I want to make a motion for, um, portable lights. I did a little research.
Portable lights?
Correct. So at Community Night, apparently there was three lights that was donated from the evening. Um, and I, I, I searched it afterwards, and apparently to rent a portable light, it's five hundred and fifty dollars per light. Now, at Community Night, there was three. If we rented four, that's twenty-two hundred dollars a month. We can rent it for six months out of the year, September, October, November, March, April, and May, and that would equal twenty-two hundred times six, is thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars a year. Um, for that, we...
Does that include insurance?
That does, that does not include maintenance, because obviously these people will maintain. Does not include storage. And according to, um, Andy Hippowitz's estimate that he gave us back in, I think this was July twelfth's meeting?
Okay.
Um, he estimated to put up lights to cost, uh, four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for each field, one for softball and one for literally would cost, uh, the total of...
Those are permanent or temporary?
Those are permanent.
And you want temporary?
I want portable lights, just to start. I think this will give, um, people in town to get used to perhaps getting permanent lights.
How are they run?
Uh, by generators. I have, actually, I have information, so I will pass it around.
Okay.
Okay?
You know, it would have been useful if you did at the point meeting.
Well, you know what, I want to...
And Andy was here. Did you, did you talk to him about it?
Well, it's all in the brochure. So I'm going to pass it over to you, you could take a look, and the point is that for thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars for ten years, it could cost us a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for those ten years for four lights.
What, ten years of what?
Ten years of lights would cost us a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, as opposed to having permanent lights that would cost us four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars per field. I think just economically, just to start off, it makes a lot more sense to get portable lights for everybody than to go ahead and say, okay, we're going to bond for, you know, permanent lights of four and sixty thousand. I mean, I'm here to meet progress too. I want everybody to, you know, work together.
That's fine. So the reason I asked you if you talked to Andy about it is that we can't spend money unless we investigate what we're spending money on. And if, like, I'm not an expert on lighting, I neither am I.
I have a question. So don't we, don't, don't we have money in our budget? The light? For thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars?
If, if Councilwoman Park is saying this is something that she wants to look into, I accept that, and for the next meeting, we can have answers stored.
Okay, so can we, can I make a motion of we need a vote next week?
You don't need a motion.
I'm sorry, next council meeting regarding portable lights then?
You're, you're kind of rushing things.
You don't need a motion for that.
You...
If what you're saying, if you want to give me copies of what you have, you can have it. Thank you so much.
So, I mean, if we had it before this meeting, we could have done it before.
I got it after.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
That's fine. This is a big idea.
If I have any questions, the eleven year...
The motion is, why can't we still fix the grass and wet field? Why do we have to table the whole thing? Why can't we just move forward?
Mark and myself and the administrator are going to do a walk-through of the field and see whatever is needed, and we'll make that report, and that's it. Thank you.
I mean, if we need to, we could always have a special meeting. You know, you talk about, like, you want to get the field ready for the, you know, season in the spring. You know, you don't want to wait a whole month, right?
I understand.
So, I mean, you know, we're used to having special meetings, so we don't mind having a special meeting.
You're past that point already, okay? Why? Excuse me. There's no money in place to do whatever you're asking for now, right? Now, what we have to do...
It's not too late, though. You mean, think like it's too late?
It's not too late.
That's right.
I didn't say it's too late. You're not hearing me. You're not hearing me. The lights, I'm going to have your answer for at the next meeting.
We had, we had a beautiful plan.
As for the other...
We had a beautiful plan. You guys voted against it, so now...
We voted it down.
Just because we voted against your plan, you don't want to work with us?
No, 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 we just said we are working with you, but you can't just pull this stuff out of your back pocket and say, "Do it, go spend money."
We always need to wait.
I'm talking, but it's not...
No, usually people, it's a major project, and people think things through and create a budget, and they talk to their engineer who sat here, the engineer sat here for two hours, waiting to be useful to us tonight.
And I will have the answer. You guys look into this.
All right.
The other stuff we're meeting with Mark and I'll have those.
All right. Oh, thank you for that. New business, job fairs. Gloria, I saw you attended a job fair with the police officers. Let me just say this to the council, we act as a whole, so if there's a job fair with the police department, that should go through the police commissioner and the public safety committee.
You know what, excuse me, Mayor, I was invited by the Korean-American Boy Enforcement Organization. Maybe they didn't extend the invitation to you, but I was invited.
With the Mark Park?
I don't know. I can't speak for what they did, but I was invited, and yes, I was there to support them.
So our officers were there in uniform but off-duty?
They weren't just our officers. It was the Korean-American Boy Enforcement Organization. They were having a job fair in Fort Lee. I don't see what the problem is.
Look, I view that as a campaign stuff for you, okay? That's the way I view it.
You know what, everything is about campaigning and politics for you.
And you can avoid, you can avoid those issues by sharing it with your fellow council members, okay?
Because you were identified as a council person. You know what, Mr. Mayor, maybe there was a reason that they didn't invite you.
So my point is to everybody, my point is that, my point is that, look, if people are going to go do things in their capacity as council members with our police department, you really should run it through the...
Excuse me, I was not there with our police department. I was invited by the organization.
The photograph I saw...
They asked me to take a picture, and I don't know what the big deal is.
That's fine.
Are you trying to make this into a political big deal?
No, it's not a big deal, because you're, but you're making it a big deal.
You're making it a big deal.
You should actually share these things with the council.
Oh, just like you share everything with us?
I do, actually. So here's the next thing I'm going to share with you.
Okay, share with us. Because I take a chance to...
Borough email addresses. Those are for borough business, folks. They're not for, you know, your politics and your personal opers, okay? So just stick to the business.